We'll call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Welcome to the regular board meeting, September 24th of the Board of Education. Thank you for joining us tonight. My name is Anupam Chuksidhu and I would like to welcome everyone. And for those that are watching at home, thank you for joining us. And I'd like my board members to introduce themselves, starting on the left.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Lazarowitz. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Patty McQuinn, thank you for being here.
Patrick Kehoe, thanks for being here.
Doug Brooks, thanks for being here.
Hi, I'm Kate Borninski. Nice to see everyone tonight.
Superintendent Merritt, would you like to introduce your staff?
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Nicole Lauer. And we appreciate her for being here, taking the minutes of our meetings. Also, the man behind the scenes, Charlie Jones, who tapes our meetings so that those in the community that cannot be here have an opportunity to know the business of the board. So we appreciate that. I want to ask the remaining members of the staff to introduce themselves, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Good evening. Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing. It's good to see everybody.
Hi, I'm Debbie Piaz. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Welcome. Liz Vartanian-Gibbs, Human Resources.
Good evening. Kurt Tiskowitz, Executive Director of Student Services. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Good evening. Beth Rail, Chief Academic Officer. Thank you for being here.
Great. Thank you. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which is being led by Mr. Mylum?
I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. All right, we're on Letter A of our agenda, the adoption of the Agenda, approval of the Consent Agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve that.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for adoption of the Agenda, approval of the Consent Agenda. Action item 20-09-13.
Second.
Motion was moved by Member Lazarowitz, seconded by Member Brooks. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
I just wanted to get some clarification about the Supervisor of Special Education Programs and Services. Is this a position that has been open for a while?
This is a position that has been open. We've filled that with a substitute because there's been a long-term medical leave that has been extended through the year.
Okay, that's what I was wondering about. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Borninski. Any other questions by board members? Okay. Superintendent Merritt, would you like to walk us through the Consent Agenda?
Yes. This evening, our Consent Agenda consists of human resources transactions. Since our last time together, we are hiring yet another champion, so we're proud to welcome her on to the PCCS family. We have administrative replacements for the Supervisor for Special Education Programs. That's our IPSET program. And we have the resolution for the Assistant Principal of Activities and Athletics. Also, for your consideration, we have tenure recommendations as well as leaves and resignations. We have the approval from our minutes of our regular meeting on September the 10th, 2019. And finally, for your consideration, an overnight out-of-state field trip. And in addition, we have the second reading of two policies. It's 2410 and 2414. 2410 is a prohibition of referral or assistance, and 2414 is reproductive health and family planning.
All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0.
So, good evening, members of the Board of Education and everyone here with us. First, I would like to introduce one of our new teachers we are hiring this evening. Her name is Deborah Licky. Come on all the way up. So, welcome, Deborah. Deborah will be the new Media Specialist at Salem High School. She comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Oakland University, as well as a master's degree at Central Michigan University. She has over 13 years of experience. She has served as the long-term sub in this position last school year. And this school year, she has been selected by the committee to be the new Media Specialist at Salem High School. So, welcome and congratulations, Deborah.
Thank you very much. It's been an honor already working last year. And it's a privilege to continue to think about working with students and staff for the upcoming years, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you come around and shake all of our hands? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Welcome. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Wow.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for joining us. Thank you.
Wow. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Something to sweeten the deal. Yeah, absolutely. There you go.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you. So, I'm sorry. That's okay. So, next, I would like to introduce you to two new administrators that we are bringing forward for the approval of the Board of Education this evening. First, Ms. Rory Meyer-Rink. And next, Mr. Raymond Miller. So if you both could come up, and I'm going to share a few words about both of our finalists. So Rory Meyer-Rink will be the new Supervisor for Special Education Programs and Services. And her work will be focused on our preschool program for students with specialized services. She has a bachelor's degree from Aquanis College, a master's from Michigan, and she is completing her specialist at this time, her specialist degree. She has years of experience as a social worker, doing crisis intervention, as well as many years of experience in early childhood education. And she also was a special education supervisor. So we are very fortunate to welcome Rory Meyer-Rink here to our district. Welcome.
Thank you. So I just want to say thank you all for this opportunity. I feel very grateful to be working as the next supervisor of the Infant Preschool Special Education Program. I'm most grateful to be able to work in a district that really values equity and opportunities for all of their students. And I just am really looking forward to helping get a solid foundation in the education of your youngest students here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Raymond Miller, who goes by Ray, correct?
Correct.
And you might remember Ray because he received a special award last school year from all of you, the Extra Mileage Award. So I want to introduce you to Ray. He is our new Assistant Principal of Activities and Athletics at Plymouth High School. He has a bachelor's degree from Central Michigan University, and he is completing his master's degree in administration from Michigan State University at this time. He is a math teacher, as well as a lacrosse coach, and he has been a vet manager in two districts. So we are very fortunate to have Ray Miller here as our new Assistant Principal of Activities and Athletics at Plymouth.
Just want to say thank you for this great opportunity. As an administrator, I look forward to continuing to build on all the great things happening here at Plymouth Canton Community Schools. This is a position and place I foresee myself being at for a very long time. We have such a great group of students, teachers, coaches, program directors, and I look forward to supporting them on their path to success. Thank you.
Congratulations, Ray.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Welcome to the district. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Rory.
Thank you for joining us.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. And now, I would like to share with you three teachers that are receiving tenure this evening, which is a very special honor. That means they have completed five years of their probationary period, and they have been rated effective all of those years, and they are ready to receive tenure in the state of Michigan. So first, well, the three teachers are Molly McKinstry, Nicole Oliver, and Michelle Zambon. So if you're with us this evening, if you could come up. I see Molly. Thank you. Okay, so first, Molly McKinstry is a Resource Room teacher at East Middle School. And this is what Scott Burke has to say, who's the principal at East Middle School. "It is my pleasure to recommend Molly McKinstry for tenure in the Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Molly is a teacher who puts the needs of her kids way above herself. She works tirelessly helping her students, but also supporting the learning of all students at East Middle School. She volunteers her time helping teachers with curriculum, making accommodations, and finding ways to support adults and students within our PBIS program. We enjoy having Molly at East and know she will continue to grow in her teaching and be an outstanding educator." Nicole, am I saying?
Nico.
Nico, thank you so much. Nico Oliver, Resource Room Teacher at Liberty Middle School. And this is what James Hunter, Principal at Liberty Middle School, has shared about Nico. "It is an honor and privilege to celebrate and recommend Mrs. Oliver for tenure in Plymouth Canton Community Schools. I have had the pleasure of hiring Nico, and she has continued to show her hard work, dedication, and belief in all students in everything she does. Mrs. Oliver is an advocate for students, but also understands the importance of making sure students learn how to advocate for themselves. Over the years, I have watched Mrs. Oliver support families and students, giving them the tools to overcome. Mrs. Oliver is not only an asset to Liberty Middle School, but for the district as a whole." So congratulations, Nico Oliver, on receiving tenure. And Michelle Zambon, who is an elementary teacher at Field School. And this is what Letitia Thompson, the principal at Field School, has to say about Michelle. "It is with great pleasure that I recommend Michelle Zambon for tenure in the Plymouth Canton Community School District. Michelle is professional and excels in her teaching position. She can be counted on to build genuine, long-lasting relationships with students and families, so much so that when Michelle moved to second grade, many families requested that their children have her as their teacher for another year. Last year, Michelle was nominated by a parent for a Teacher of the Week Award sponsored by the WNIC radio station. Michelle and our entire staff were awarded donuts and coffee as part of her recognition. We are truly lucky to have Michelle as part of our team." So congratulations, Michelle, on receiving tenure. And I would like to also say congratulations, once again, to Molly, Nico, and Michelle. We are so happy that you continue to work with us in Plymouth Canton Schools and that you've received tenure this evening. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Congratulations, Molly.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Molly.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to the new hires, and congratulations to those that just received tenure. That's a big milestone. We are now moving on to Letter B, celebrating success. And Member Lazarowitz has that honor today.
Good evening. We're celebrating success this evening. We will honor Arlene Wenzel, PCCS Coordinator of Data Services. Arlene was nominated for the Mary Beth Carroll Extra Mileage Award by Kurt Tiskowitz, Executive Director of Student Services. Arlene showed willingness to help out when the district had significant issues that needed immediate action. She was an important part of the solution, and Arlene continues to be a valued asset to the district. I'd like to invite Arlene and Kurt up to the podium to say a few words.
Thank you, John. It was my honor to nominate Arlene for the Extra Mileage Award. We were in a situation where we were in a critical time with developing our student schedule at the park. If you can imagine trying to schedule 6,000 students and 300 teachers into the schedule for this coming fall, or this current fall. The person that we had in that position unfortunately had a medical situation and was out, and did not come back in time to get that done. So I begged and pleaded with Arlene, and she graciously stepped up and helped out. We have a lot of fantastic people in this district, and I've worked with many of them. But in this time of need, Arlene really, really showed how exceptional she was, and I'm honored to nominate her for the Extra Mileage Award.
Thank you very much. Currently, I am the only person that completely understands the schedule process at the park. And with the restructuring of the scheduling position, we have an opportunity to eliminate this single point of failure. Also imperative is the park administrators becoming more familiar with the scheduling constraints and the process it takes to schedule over 4,000 students and approximately 300 teachers. All these items are valid to ensure a successful scheduling process going forward. With multiple people knowledgeable of the scheduling process, we will have the opportunity to establish some type of succession plan. Thank you for allowing me to speak to this very important subject. So, thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the Board of Education, I present to Arlene, I present Arlene Wenzel with the Mary Beth Carroll Extra Mileage Award. Congratulations, Arlene. Please go up and shake the board members and administrators' hands. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Arlene. We are moving to Part C, Board Committee Reports, starting with the President's Reports. I just would like to mention that yesterday, we had the honor of seeing Superintendent Merritt and PCEA President Heather Fitzpatrick, right? That's the new name, at the Education Town Hall at Erickson. So it was well-attended. Loved hearing the remarks from our local legislatures, as well as Superintendent Merritt and Heather Fitzpatrick. I got to get used to Heather Fitzpatrick.
Fitzpatrick.
Fitzpatrick. Yes, thank you. Thank you for the correction. And I also want to thank my board colleagues, Member McQuinn, Member Borninski, and Member Kehoe for attending the town hall meeting. So would any of you like to make comments on what you witnessed?
Sure. It was a good discussion about the budget process and how that works at the state level, and specifically how it impacts the school aid budget. We had legislators that were representing our district in both the House of Representatives and the State Senate. And it, you know, it really highlighted some of the challenges that we have with educational funding in the state of Michigan right now, and the struggles that we have in order to make sure that we can properly compensate our teachers and grow our programs and really support our students. So we're lucky in this community in that we have legislators that are very much in support of that. But across the state, we don't have that same situation. So it really creates some challenging processes. So my recommendation to all of you listening, as now that I have the soapbox here, is that continue to vote for great people in our community that support public education and talk to your friends and family throughout the state, and make sure that they vote for people that support public education.
Thank you. Member Borninski and Member McQuinn, would you like to say anything?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to Student Performance and Achievement. We met last week Wednesday and had a pretty robust meeting, some of which you're going to actually hear about today. And we actually got through the EL textbook recommendation, which is actually 10 years old. And there is the first read for moving into the new textbooks, which are aligned to the Common Core, as well as having online components, and they also have read-aloud functionality. So that is up for consideration. We got a nice overview of that, as well as the out-of-country field trips, and an overview of the Skills for Success reboot elective that's happening at the middle school. And we also received an update of the Science Secondary Course Sequence by Dr. Deirdre Brady. Is there anything else I missed from? Okay, and I thank Member Lazarowitz for being there. Next up is Policy Committee. Member McQuinn?
We actually met at 5:30 tonight, just before this meeting. We have some policies that will be coming back. We are going to be talking about still video surveillance. And our next meeting is October 22nd. It is downstairs at 5:30, which is right before the second board meeting in October. Everyone is welcome.
Thank you. And moving on to Finance and Operations. Member Kehoe?
We were scheduled to have a Finance and Operations meeting last Thursday, but we canceled it because we didn't have any agenda items to discuss. We'll have another one coming up here in this boardroom on next Thursday? No, I'm sorry. October 3rd, sorry. Two Thursdays from now, October 3rd at 4:30 PM, and we welcome everybody to come.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Citizens' Comments. We have one from Scott Mylum. And you will have three minutes, and Nick is going to put the timer on for you.
Okay. Hello, everyone. I wanted to read something to you. This is from a book I read that just came out in August, and it really hit me as a teacher, and I just wanted to share it with you tonight. This is from a book called How to Be an Anti-Racist by Ibram Kendi. And he, I found out in this book, was an IB student, and he writes about his experience. He says, "My parents nudged me into international baccalaureate or IB classes, and even though I didn't have particularly high expectations for myself, I went along with it. I entered the sanctimonious world of IB surrounded by a sea of white and Asian students. This environment only made my hatred of school more intense, if now for different reasons. I felt stranded, save for an occasional class with my friend Maya, a black teen preparing for Spelman College. None of my white or Asian classmates came to save me. Rarely opening my lips or raising my hands, I shaped myself according to what I thought they believed about me. I felt like a person in a leaky boat as they sailed by me every day on their way to standardized test prep sessions, Ivy League dreams, and competitions for teachers' praises. I saw myself through their eyes, an imposter deserving of invisibility. My drowning in the supposed sea of advanced intelligence was imminent." I teach IB chemistry, and we have, that's not isolated to him. That's a problem that we have, I think, in all of our classes, but I know that in our group in particular. And I know that's a very complicated and complex subject, and there's a lot you can break down from it. Something that I thought was that we don't do much to teach our students how to be an effective peer with their other students in the classes. We put them in diverse environments, but we don't prepare them. And in particular, two things that I find are that, one, we don't, we don't teach kids well that you can do the same thing to different people and have a different impact each time. And sometimes that's very obvious to people, but when it comes to race and ethnicity and culture, that becomes very defensive for a lot of people. I think we could do a better job with preparing them to be in a supportive role towards other kids. I know that's something that I'm hoping to work for. And the other thing I thought was just kind of, I have two kids. I don't feel like when they go to school at their elementary school, that they get as much guidance from adults as they do from their peers. They are left to figure out those complicated things on their own too much. When I step in as a parent, it's new to them, and I can tell they've had a lot of socialization from their peers that has not been guided by someone that probably should be guiding them through something that's so complicated. And so, that's it. Thank you.
Do we have any other citizens' comments? No? Okay, thank you. Moving on to Letter E, Administrative Reports and Recommendations, starting with the Superintendent's Report.
All right, thank you. I'd like to begin with just doing some acknowledgements. First, I'd like to just give a shout out to, I call it the gift that keeps on giving, with our robotics team led by Jay Obznick. Every time we turn around, there's either a world championship or some acknowledgement because they are so incredibly talented. This month, we had the opportunity to recognize Jay, who just was honored as, with the Michigan Lottery Excellence in Education Award. And with this award, it's a weekly winner. He receives a $1,500 cash prize, a $500 grant to the school, and he's featured in the news segment with four partner stations, including WXYZ TV in Detroit. And I really, it was really fun. He didn't know what was happening. Principal Lewis surprised him, Assistant Principal Barbie, but most importantly, the kids came up with their robot. He thought he was coming down the hallway for another acknowledgement, and then they were able to surprise him with this. And he's so humble. If you just, if you know Jay at all, he always says, "The work is the kids," and he's just humble to be a part of it. So we just want to elevate him on this day and recognize the hard work that he does, many, many hours, and support that he gives, just to truly leave a legacy for our kids at the park. Just another announcement, I think, that's important this week. We have Late Start, and if you recall, the Late Start is an effort to allow time for our teachers to get together for professional development at the start of the school year. So we have two. This, first one will be Thursday, the 26th. The next one is February 27th. We received, I think we put out email communication last week. We have district website. We'll send out a reminder, I believe, so, Mr. Brandon, tomorrow. Schools will start an hour later at the high school. It's an hour and 21 minutes later at the middle school, and an hour and 27 minutes later at the elementary school. That's a slight change from last year. We had some feedback when we piloted this in the previous year, and teachers just needed a little bit more time to travel between buildings. And so that adjustment has been made to the bus schedule and communicated out, and so everyone should have that information. But we just want to make sure that we remind everyone that that is coming. Also, something coming this week is the first Parent Council meeting, and that will take place this Friday here in this room at 9:30. We have a new council president this year, Ms. Judy Hart. We want to thank her for her leadership. For those that don't know, the Parent Council really is a liaison between the schools and the district to kind of give information about things that are happening within the district, and they can take that information back to their schools, as well as bring concerns from the schools to the district leadership team. So this is open to the entire PCCS community. If anyone is interested in joining, please show up here in this room on Friday at 9:30 for their first meeting. And finally, among the speaking engagements, which I thought was great to be a part of the panel last night, I also had the honor to be a speaker at a panel in Baltimore through the invitation of the School Library Leadership Summit. And this is our own fabulous Kathy Lester, is working with this group, and invited me to be on a panel with five different superintendents and chief academic officers throughout the country, really talking about the importance of the media specialists, the librarians, to our overall success of students. The conference itself was entitled Equity and Access. And when we think about all of the work that we're doing with equity, access, with student voice, and the importance of our librarians to that work and to literacy, we think about the third-grade reading legislation being implemented this year, and the importance of having the support of our librarians. I think that we are definitely, I'm going to say, under the spotlight because we have dedicated media specialists at each of our buildings. And if you recall, in the past, when we were dealing with financial challenges, that was one of the positions that we cut at the elementary levels, and we tried to do that shared approach. But we really saw that the impact was not good for kids. And so we thank you as a board for really supporting that recommendation to bring back our media specialists. They make a difference. They impact our kids and our kids' ability to have access and opportunities through literature, making literature, making sure that they see themselves in the books that they read, and the whole, you know, our students are digital natives, and so just giving them that opportunity to really explore technology has been so valuable. And so when we look at Michigan alone, I think our ranking is 47th in the country in terms of the per pupil to librarian ratio, and that's just not a good statistic, especially when we're dealing with, where I talked about the third-grade reading legislation. So we're in the right, we, I'm going to say, we're leading that work here in Plymouth Canton, and we want to continue to get that message out. And so it was a privilege to be a part of that discussion. So with that, now we will transition and take this opportunity to talk about our dynamic plan. If you think about our dynamic plan, we always share that this is the compass for our work for five years. Believe it or not, we started this in 2016, so this is 2016 to 2021, which means that next year is going to be an opportunity to come back together and begin this planning process for the future strategic plan. With the board in particular, I know as we've gone through the years, there's been a expressed desire to really want to be a part of the work and to give input to the plan. When we came together in 2016, we were really kind of working to marry three different plans that were out there, and didn't have a lot of opportunity for a lot of input. So we will look forward to next year when we can really work together to talk collaboratively about the strategic objectives that we have for our students as we continue to work to fulfill our mission and vision of propelling every student to excellence. With that being said, we try to start the beginning of each school year with really focusing on really our initiatives for the year. When we talk about dynamic plan, it is our strategic plan, but we've chosen that word "dynamic plan" intentionally because it is something that we believe is big work, it's dynamic, it's fluid, it's ever-changing. And so even though we have this compass, we are able to be flexible and change for what are the needs of our students. One thing that we've talked about over and over again is the need to streamline. So when we first came together marrying these three plans, we had everything but the kitchen sink in there, and that was really not possible for us to accomplish that well over five years. So through time, we've really worked to streamline and make sure that we can put strategic objectives that are doable, that everybody breaks away from a room and they can say, "These are the things that we're working on." You'll actually see some changes in the Teaching and Learning section this evening that I think are significant to really say, "What is the work?" We were overwhelming our teachers. There's so much to be taught as we've worked so hard to redefine and take an audit of our curriculum and really make sure that we do that work with a plan for the next five years, really looking at what is important, and you'll hear more about this evening. So with that, I'd like to invite our team, beginning with, I believe, our Human Resources Department. So the way that we're going to work through this plan, we're focusing more on the highlighted items or our focus areas for 2019-20. At the end of each section, we'll stop and have some opportunities for board questions, as well as input on maybe some ideas that you would like for us to continue to focus on this year. So we'll try to get through, I think, last year, we had to take two meetings in order to accomplish this. This year, it is our goal to get through this within this one meeting today. So with that, I'd like to begin with our Human Resources with Dr. Vartanian Gibbs.
Okay, good evening, members of the Board of Education. The Human Resources Department services all departments in our school district by providing focused service to staff members in an innovative, flexible, and fiscally responsible manner, which will support and elevate the educational experience for all students. Leaders in the department, as you know, is Kurt Tiskowitz, who is the Executive Director of Staffing, Student Services, and Policy. And I'm also very fortunate to have Dr. Denise Lilly, who is the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, as a team member in the Human Resources Department. Denise's position was placed in Human Resources because of the role and the work which will be implemented that connects to every department in the school district while looking through the lens of equity. Dr. Lilly will work with the Department of Teaching and Learning to support culturally responsive and equitable classroom practices. The Finance Department supports the work of Dr. Lilly by providing the resources needed to purchase materials and secure trainers and consultants. A review of documents and resources in the Marketing and Communications Department will take place to ensure all students and families are represented in our materials and in our forms of communication. At this time, Dr. Lilly is going to share a few words with you.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Education. Again, briefly, I wanted to highlight some of the initiatives that we will be working on in the Human Resources Department. As many of you may know, over the years, we've had several conversations with regard to implicit bias and microaggressions and the need for training in those areas. And so I am happy to report that we will, we've solidified dates for those trainings for all of our district leaders, as well as our building leaders. So on October 28th and October 29th, we have Frida Sampson, who is a consultant with the Michigan Roundtable for Diversity and Inclusion, who will be working with our district leaders and, again, building leaders to ensure that we are covering this most important topic. As we know, the impact that it has on families and children when we are not aware of our biases and many of the microaggressions that we may unconsciously deliver from time to time has a significant impact. And so we want to make sure that we are doing the work to support all of our families. In addition to that, we had an opportunity to work with Extended Day over the summer to provide some training as well with regard to biases because it's very important for us to look within ourselves to see what are those things that we may be bringing to the table that may be, again, impacting our families and students. So as Dr. Vartanian Gibbs stated, I will be working with a variety of different departments. So we're also looking with, working to work with our secretaries and PARAs and other unions to ensure that we are giving the same trainings, excuse me, to support our staff. So thank you very much. And with that, I will turn it back over to Dr. Vartanian Gibbs.
So I would like to share with you that we have five subgoals in the Human Resources Dynamic Plan. And I want to remind all of you, because you hear it all the time, we are hiring champions. And that is the legacy that we want to leave with everyone in this school district, that we are hiring champions for our school district, for our students, from the Human Resources Department to all of our schools. So you will note, the first sub-goal is to attract, hire, and retain highly qualified employees. During the 1920 school year, we will implement the following initiatives to support this sub-goal. We are working on the Teacher Mentoring Program, which is aligned to the new Teacher Induction Program by providing professional development and culturally responsive teaching practices and restorative practices. In HR, we are going to build stronger partnerships with Eastern Michigan University, Michigan State University, and University Michigan Dearborn. I am proud to share that we have 27 student teachers this semester and over 40 pre-student teachers working in our school district this fall. This is an increase from 20 student teachers last school year and seven student teachers during the 1718 school year. And this work has been accomplished by my partnership with Mr. Frank Righorello, who's the Director of Partnerships and External Affairs. We are also working to create a partnership at Historically Black Colleges and Universities, HBCUs. And the goal of this work is to have student teachers from HBCUs complete their internships in our school district. The Staff and Teachers of Color Committee is working to build a community to support and retain staff members so they can best serve our diverse student population. We are reviewing the hiring procedures in Human Resources, and we're going to integrate the work of the Payroll Department, the Finance Department, and we are moving towards an electronic attendance system for salary employees using frontline education software, as well as the SMART system. We will be reviewing our onboarding plan for new employees, and we are going to create an exit survey for employees who resign and retire. So we have that data to review to make some decisions as we move forward in HR. What do I point to? I'm sorry. I got to turn it on. That's your job, Nick. Thank you, Nick, for turning the slide. Sub-goal two is to provide professional development opportunities for all staff members in their respective areas. We are committed to building capacity for all of our employee groups so that they have the tools necessary to elevate students and leave a legacy in our school district. The following professional development opportunities are going to take place this school year. Elementary teachers will receive two days of professional development and restorative practices. New administrators are receiving three days of training on Charlotte Danielson's Framework for Teaching, as well as Title IX training. As Denise shared, Dr. Lilly, all administrators will attend Bias and Microaggressions training this school year. Board members will have an opportunity to receive training in our discipline hearing process. Our secretaries will attend a meeting this week to update them on procedures in our district. They will also complete a survey on professional development so we can plan workshops and trainings to meet their needs. Par professionals will attend an all-day training with a focus on culturally relevant practices. And annual training opportunities are taking place for all of our staff members. And at this time, I would like to introduce you to Mr. Tiskowitz.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to be here this evening. Thank you for having us.
Kurt, can we pause for just a second?
Absolutely.
The presentation that you're showing here is different than the one that we've got. We were getting an updated one that was mailed out to us today, and it's different than that. So at least on the previous slide, it was different. I want to make sure that we're all following the same materials.
Yeah, that slide is different than what we have in our presentation. Can you go to the next slide? Let's see if that one's the same.
Did you use the, what was in the packet, or did you follow one of those links?
Nicole sent, Ms. Lauer sent out a new presentation today.
It's the same one.
It was the same one from Friday. But it was what Nick sent to me, was the original presentation. There was only a change in the minutes for today.
Okay.
Just kind of track it as we go.
Yeah.
Break on, just seeing that one page, so I don't know what happened with that.
Okay.
Okay.
How's it? The Human Resource Department meets during the school year with the various bargaining groups to discuss issues that come up and work to solve problems before they become grievances. One of the strengths of our district is the relationships that we have built with our groups. And I want to give a special shout out to our PCEA President Heather Fitzpatrick and our MEA Uniserve Director Seth Furlough, and all of our union leaders to, for their willingness to meet with us. We find a lot of value in our meetings monthly. This year, negotiations will take place with our maintenance group and our licensed technicians. We will also have a wage reopener with the Extended Day Association. We also survey our employee groups to assess the need for additional interest-based bargaining training for new employees and existing employees that have not been trained yet. Using the interest-based strategies approach has certainly served our district very well in negotiations. Next slide. The Human Resource Department has been working to streamline our procedures and optimize the use of technology by staff throughout the district. By utilizing this technology, staff can spend more time working with our students. So it's important that we have systems that are put in place that can be used effectively and efficiently, and thus giving our staff members more time to be with our students. Our new-to-district families utilized our online student pre-enrollment process that we put in place last year through our MyStar Student System. This will be our second year using that system. The first year, we looked at implementing it. This year, we fine-tuned and really made sure that we had a good product, and we saw a lot of success this year. We will look to at ways to improve on this process that we put in place, and we will continue to grow from there. We've received a lot of positive feedbacks from not only our secretaries who work on that registration process. That's a lot of information that they're handling, much of it's done by the parents, and so it's much more streamlined and efficient for our secretaries. We're also going to explore the idea of a centralized registration process for the next school year. This is a process where all the registrations will be done in one location. That way, we have a better opportunity to have cleaner data and make sure that that process is done correctly and much more efficiently. And last year, we introduced our back-to-school registration update module. This was a process that we put in place to allow our families to update all of their medical information, their contact information, and other information that we collect annually. We're going to be focusing on the process and working to streamline that much more efficiently than we did. This year, we had a couple glitches, and we were going to work through those. We have received a lot of positive feedback from our staff and families. You think about the time when your kids brought home all the paperwork that had to be filled out. All that's now done electronically now, and you're not having to fill out the same form for all of your children. It's a click of a button, and it fills it out for everybody. So it's been a great process for us. And lastly, in the area of communications regarding the HR procedures, the department works monthly with our policy committee, probably the best committee here. There you go, Patty, got a plug for you. Our focus areas have been on equity and school safety and security. During our department, our department's focus will be to continue with our monthly meetings and updating policies as we receive updates from the change in the law or different things that come up. We will also provide much more training on our board policies to our staff. And finally, we will also focus on creating an electronic handbook for our staff using Google Sites. This will make accessing procedures and updating procedures much more efficiently, again, giving that time for staff to be with the students. Finally, with all of these initiatives that we've been focused on this year, we certainly want to make sure that things are done efficiently and effectively. And by hiring quality people, by putting procedures in place, we're certainly going to leave a legacy for our students and making sure that we have the best for our staff. With this, I think we are now at the opportunity to provide some input from the board or answer any questions you might have.
Questions, colleagues? Yes, Member Kehoe?
My question was on the HR stuff and specifically on the diversity and equity. We heard Dr., I'm sorry, Mr. Mylum's talked today about anti-racism programs. And I think that's a little different than some of the inclusion work that we're doing. And can you give us some input as to whether that's something that's part of our process or curriculum now, or if not, if it's something that we're considering?
So this year, we're actually looking to do an equity audit with regard to our curriculum. And so we want to make sure that we are looking very closely at all of the pieces within our curriculum to see if there are gaps with regard to representation in the work, whether or not there are gaps with regard to the delivery and methods. And you'll hear more about that in the Teaching and Learning presentation. And so to answer your question, yes, we definitely want to have some of those conversations, and we definitely want to put a focus on how we're going to bring students to the forefront. One of the things that I would definitely say is that we also want to be very clear that it's so important that we make sure that our teachers and our educators have the training first. We can't always put the focus necessarily on the students and with regard to the training, but making sure that those who are delivering the instruction and then working with the students every day have what they need in the classroom as well.
So I've heard some great work about the implicit bias training and things like that, but I think ultimately, we probably have to go beyond that?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. So this is just the beginning. As we mentioned in the spot meeting last week, you go slow to go fast. And so we want to make sure that we are very intentional in our work. We don't want to be very hastily in what we're doing because we recognize that our students are at the forefront of all the decisions that we make.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Member Borninski?
Dr. Lilly, sort of backpacking on Member Kehoe's question. As far as the implicit bias training goes, I think it's great that you're starting out with administrators. Can you give us any kind of rough timeline about how it's going to trickle down to other groups that we have within the district?
So again, that's one of the things that I heard Superintendent Merritt say, is we don't want to overwhelm our teachers. And so, as again, you'll hear in the Teaching and Learning presentation this evening, we're doing restorative practice training this year with our teachers. We want to make sure that we cover that information and then begin to integrate the other work as soon as possible. So I don't necessarily see us doing some of that, the training this year, but perhaps next year. But again, we want to make sure that we're strategic in what we're doing and that we're not overwhelming people so that we're doing it most effectively.
Certainly. I get that. I just, I'm excited about this because it's something that I and other board members who aren't here anymore have been pushing for for a long time. So I think it's wonderful.
Well, thank you. And it's definitely urgent. We recognize the urgency behind the work, but we want to make sure that we're doing it the right way.
And I also am wondering, aside from implicit bias training, as far as to what Mr. Mylum was referring to, are there any plans to have any kind of, any kind of training for teachers on how to handle these kinds of conversations with students? As, you know, if there's a conflict in the classroom that centers around some kind of issue of diversity, for example?
So we definitely will look into all of those different endeavors. As I said before, we are in the Teaching and Learning segment. You'll hear a little bit more about some additional trainings. We're also partnering with Jenny Winters from Wayne Risa to have training in the building, at the building level with regard to culturally responsive practices. You'll hear from Dr. Brady as well in Teaching and Learning about the work that the instructional coaches are doing in the classroom to support teachers as well, to have those higher conversations. So yes, it's coming, definitely, but again, we want to be strategic in what we're doing and make sure that we're making an effort and not doing it hastily to appease individuals, to make sure that we're supporting our children.
Thank you. Other questions from?
I have some questions for, or a question at least for Kurt.
Can we pause on that just for a second? And other questions from other board members?
It's not so much a question, it's just a comment. So I told Dr. Vartanian Gibbs earlier, I was really happy to see the strides they've made in hiring staff this year. It was very nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Other board members, before we go back to Member Borninski? Okay, go ahead.
Kurt, I know that we had piloted the, I think we piloted the back-to-school registration last year, and then this year, we were doing it, rolling it out for everyone. There seemed to be some frustrations with that by parents. And I'm wondering if there's any way that we can better communicate to them that they needed, like if they did it, you know, a couple weeks before they went to school. This is especially the parents at the park. If there's any way we could- at the park, if there's any way we could communicate better to them that they need to recheck their registration?
Yeah. One of the things, glitches we experienced this year was one of the modules wasn't set for the seniors, and so we had some of our seniors that did just that. They completed it several weeks before a scheduled pickup. We fixed the problem. Well, what we didn't realize is anyone who had done it prior to that, it was going to give them an error. And so that was one of the things we learned as we went through this process, but we can certainly do some great, a better job of communicating, absolutely.
Yeah, because a lot of those students, they're old enough that they go by themselves, and so there isn't a parent there necessarily to sign off on anything.
One of the new features that I didn't mention was that in previous years, last year and this year, we weren't able to do it on a mobile device. They have come out with a mobile MyStar app that gives parents that ability to do it right from a mobile device now too, which is another enhancement, which is nice.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Perme?
I have a question for Dr. Lily, and I brought this up at SPA, but I want to make sure that all of my colleagues hear it.
Yes.
For your October 28th, 29th bias training, I had asked if board members could attend, and you had said yes.
Yes.
Is that still open to us?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Can we get that in board notes?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. At this time, we'd like to invite our Chief Finance and Operations Officer and her team, WPS, to lead us through the finance area of our dynamic plan.
Good evening. The goal of the Finance Department is to proactively, efficiently, and transparently manage the district's short and long-term finances by establishing priorities within a reasonable budget that supports the district's mission and vision. And so in support of our continued legacy of fiscal responsibility and alignment of resources, we have six finance goals and four operational goals to accomplish this task. And tonight, Stephanie Trotter, Director of Finance and Accounting, will speak to the first couple.
Good evening. So one of the sub-goals of the Finance Department is that we will present for board approval a proposed budget that is aligned with district goals and objectives while maintaining a comprehensive and inclusive, transparent budgeting process. And to support that goal, our initiatives include presenting monthly financial statements to the board and the Finance and Operations Committee, analyzing fund balance with projected budgets prepared through 2024, continuing to assess our budget by presenting mid-year and final budget amendments in January and June of 2020 respectively, and then continuing to gather feedback from the community and board while also holding our transformation, our collaborative transformation meeting, which will be held in April of 2020. Our next sub-goal is that we will receive an unqualified annual opinion, an annual unqualified audit opinion from our external auditors, which is Plant Moran, and provide monthly financial statements that effectively summarize our financial operations and condition. Related to the goal of our unqualified audit opinion, I'm pleased to announce that we did receive an unqualified opinion. Our audit is complete for fiscal year 2019. You'll hear more about this at an upcoming board meeting, but to clarify, an unqualified opinion is the highest opinion that you can receive. It means that our financial statements are free of material misstatements and that they can be relied upon for financial decisions. Finally, we will continue to evaluate our countywide SMART system, which is our accounting system, to ensure that it's effective for all of our users. And I will turn it back to Debbie.
Thank you. Next, we're going to continue to monitor our fund balance impact to assure transitions with and without the Wayne County enhancement millage. As you know, we're in year four of a six-year enhancement millage with an anticipated renewal election in November of 2020. The county has to do that as a county as a whole. The impact to PCCS is approximately $6 million on an annual basis currently, but with changes in legislation, a renewal would reduce that to about $4.5 million and still a significant amount of money towards our funding sources. We'll continue to pursue grants with others, including the Community Financial Credit Union, the BOSH, and the EEF to get, gather classroom grants throughout the system and identify potential collaborative opportunities in conjunction with Director of Partnerships and External Affairs, Frank Ruziello. Sorry, Frank. Next, we're going to pursue and execute through a vacancy in our Finance Department. We were able to repurpose a position and call a, or create a purchasing coordinator in Mesia Knight Richardson. Mesia's main goals will be to continue to provide professional development to all levels of our staff on procurement and procurement processes and procedures, including issuing requests for proposals, quotes and bids on any purchases they do, to evaluate current purchasing policies for efficiencies and effectiveness as she goes through her annual review of our expenditures and look at large expenditures that could benefit from bidding or quoting with other vendors. Like we did in the prior year, we did with paper and plastic, we were able to save about 50% of the cost of that. We'll continue to look at those large purchases, this year's paper and tires and other things, but we'll continue to look at that to evaluate those purchases to the extent we can bid out the work and, or bid out the good purchases and then receive savings to put more money in the classrooms. We'll also use Mesia to improve the accountability of purchasing and payment processes with her position. Also important to the Finance Department is to continue to monitor legislation. So as Superintendent Merritt spoke to earlier, we are going to continue to work through our Wayne County RISA connections, our Michigan School Business Official connections, and monitor state and federal legislation as it provides us our, 80% of our funding through the foundation allowance. So last week, conference report was issued on September the 12th and is moving to the Governor's Desk for signature. It includes about $240 per pupil, and the foundation allowance increased year over year and will mean to us an additional $1 million. Over that was originally budgeted. We budgeted it $180 per pupil, and what's in the conference report is about $240. It is not what the Governor proposed earlier this year, but it does garner us a little bit of extra funding and support, and so it's not everything we wanted in the School Research Collaborative Report, but it's moving us in the correct direction. Finally, we're going to continue to monitor long-term debt, and we had at earlier board meetings and study sessions, Paul Stoddard of PFM, our financial advisor, to speak on those topics and give us options for debt and debt restructuring. He came in the summer and fall of 2018, and he also came to us on a study session for, in July 22nd, 2019, to update those expectations. And with those taxable values and all those predictions he made on where our district could go, we're able to manage our expectations and our expenditures without increasing the millage rate beyond the current 4.02 debt millage. So we are continuing to monitor that through cash flow in order to look at fund equity necessary without borrowing. We'd rather have the expenditures go to the classroom than go to interest, and also look at maximizing our interest earnings. I know we were able to garner about $400,000 this year in interest earnings above and beyond what we had in the past by looking at that cash flow more closely. And we'll continue to evaluate that long-term debt needs of the school district as we'll hear the 10-year master plan is currently in process, and we're going to have that presentation coming up to you in the next month or so. And so that will continue to show you long-term improvements and enhancements and ongoing maintenance needs of the district, and then this will allow us a funding mechanism in order to fund those needs. And now I'm going to introduce Tom Grozinski. He's our new Director of Operations, and he'll speak to the operational goals of the school district.
Tim.
Tim. I got the last name.
There you go. That's a tough one. Good evening. Our focus is GRBS and the custodial product that we're receiving. We feel like they had a pretty good summer, that they, they did achieve a cleanliness level that was, that sparkled a little bit out there. We're, they really want to build on the momentum. It's going to really take a full employment company for them to keep that momentum up, so they're trying some innovative hiring practices. They're using shuttle buses, Ubers, Lifts, Job Share through online incremental scheduling. So the younger generation and their device will schedule for two hours at Bird Elementary this week, but maybe not next week. It's a, it's a pretty interesting concept. One of the things we did this year was we published some binders more accurately defining duties of the engineers and the custodians in the building, so those are out this year, and we're using that to help try and coordinate the team a little bit better and get a little bit better product. We're beginning to meet with the stakeholders, the principals, engineers, central maintenance, and GRBS to work on the overall form and function of the buildings. We continue to promote the use of school dude for feedback on the custodial performance. So, and we're getting some, some good usage on that and some, some good feedback.
I'm going to speak a couple. Thanks.
Okay.
All right. Okay. I just want to talk two seconds on the 10-year master plan. We're going to come, like I said earlier, to you, but we were able to complete annual boiler, sewer drain, mechanical systems, roofing, and parking lot inspections by independent contractors, and that's going to get pulled into the 10-year master plan. So that was part of the facilities work done this year, as well as then identifying the funding sources in order to get that work done. So you'll hear about, more about that in a few. And then Tim spoke to all the work that we're doing. You know, we passed bond procurement of additional supplies for custodians and like the wax they use on the flooring, made it easier to clean wax off the floor and then reapply it. And so those kinds of things are helping our custodial services. They've also employed additional management in order to have ongoing oversight and onsite. They relocated a person here from the west side of the state to have additional management onsite to can do those continuous process improvement and quality reviews. So we're hoping that all those investments made in cleanliness will have a continued improvement of that service. On transportation, same thing, KPIs are still being monitored with a transportation company during school services. They look at efficiencies and effectiveness in the routes that we use for transportation, and when we have issues, we are able to collaboratively meet and discuss those in order to reduce ride times when possible or add routes when, when necessary. And so we'll continue to do that, especially with the special needs transportation, which is, which is very intricate and very driven by the IEPs. And so we'll, we'll meet now with our, with our special services team to talk especially about the special needs routing. And then we'll continue to evaluate transportation alternatives, supporting various committees throughout the school district on their transportation alternatives. And finally, Kristin Hennessey, who unfortunately is ill and can't be here this evening, I'm going to present her nutritional services goals for this year. The big one is the completion of the USDA administrative review of the program. We were originally scheduled for last year, but due to their timing, they pushed it to this year. So that's the big work this year, is to get through that USDA administrative review. We'll continue to expand our environmental enhancements. We came to, two weeks ago or about a month ago and showed you the enhancements done to the elementary levels, and now Kristin's going to move forward with the middle schools on environmental enhancements to the cafeteria and food service space. She'll continue to look at menus, both ingredients, language conversions, and allergens, but also expand that ethnically through the district as well to have more offerings for students. We continue to participate in a survey of students, parents, and stakeholders to gather that feedback, and then we'll provide training for food service preparation. She brings all her entire folks together for a whole day of training and then continues to train throughout the year, smaller groups. But that's what Kristin's main areas of operations will be this year, to enhance nutritional services. And with that, the business and services departments of Finance and Operations will take questions or inputs at this time.
Questions? Yes, Member Brooks?
Yes, I want to ask a question about transportation for Starkweather. I usually pick up my daughter after, after school, and I noticed that there's a lot of vans that are limo services that pull in front of the building and pick up kids. I was wondering if that was part of our transportation, or is that private?
It's private. It's private transportation. So we have three routes right now with buses at Starkweather Academy.
Okay, so the parents?
Pay for that.
Pay for all that. Okay. I was just curious, because I see like half a dozen of them every time I go over there. So, okay, that's it.
Sure. Member Kehoe?
So I have a number of questions. On the financial and accounting system, can you please remind me, did we reallocate the money that we had set aside for that previously?
We absorbed it into the general fund, fund balance, yeah.
And so what are you seeing right now with respect to the Wayne RISA system? Are you finding that it's closer to where you need to be?
It is, it, like everything, has its strengths and we, and areas to improve. The strength of the system is it's county-wide, and so we have a lot of support from Wayne RISA. The areas to improve are the things in the projections and budgeting software that's not as good as some others, but right now, we're still evaluating, and to the extent that Stephanie and I can continue to work together to make sure that we have a product that we can present to you at FNO and those Finance and Operations Committee meetings that's accurate and, and has little variance, then we'll continue to do so.
Great. The second-best committee.
Yeah. I beg to differ, but okay.
You know you've got to know when you're beat, so I have more questions, but I'll...
Okay. Member Borninski?
Hi, Debbie. Sorry that Kristin's not here, because I'm hoping I'm not putting you on the spot. I'm wondering if you could explain a little bit about the USDA review and why it's important?
Okay, so as a Michigan public school, we are a recipient of the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program, so those are federal resources. Very important because the free and reduced count that we have in district really garners a lot of funding. It's a mechanism by which they look at districts across the state, and we are required to be a part of that group of participating school districts. And as such, because they're federal dollars, there's federal requirements and federal guidelines, and there's also state guidelines. And so when the feds come in, USDA, it really does affect both the state and the federal. And so we have, it's a big review. It takes about a couple weeks. It's everything from stem to stern on all the policies and procedures that you have in place, as well as staffing and hiring and making sure everybody's got the proper certifications, and it's a big deal.
Yes, thank you. I, I just thought the public would like to know about that, because I think it gives us a little more assurance about our food programs.
Correct.
Thank you. Other questions from this side before I go back to the right? No? Okay. Member Kehoe?
My next question is on the maintenance and custodial process. Right now, we're seeing a pretty significant disparity between the surveys that we do that are reflective of the KPIs and the surveys that we do for the educators and the staff inside the school. At the same time, we don't see for those schools that are having dissatisfaction from the, from the staff, a corresponding increase in the number of school dude requests. So, I mean, I didn't see that as one of the focus areas. I would expect to see for a school that is unhappy with their, the quality of clean, that there would be a massive number of requests or missed tasks that were there. And I'd like to see what is our process in order to, to reflect that. If, if people have given up, that's bad, you know, we don't want that to happen. If they're just not doing it, then that doesn't help us to actually address or fix the problem.
So we've developed a new set of KPIs, or revised set of KPIs for custodial operations that we're going to roll out throughout the, this year. So that was presented to the board in, in June of 2019. So we'll continue to look at KPIs, the K-12 Insight Survey, and school dude, and compare and contrast the comments made, make sure that they're all valid. Every school's a little bit different. Some schools embrace the use of school dude and some not so much. They just go to their PE and, which is our plant engineer, I shouldn't use acronyms, their plant engineer, and, and have that person then put in the, the request. So it's, it's different in, in every different building, and we're trying to get it more consistent, so that's a number one. We're going to the Secret... We're going to the secretary's meeting in two days, and we're going to talk about that and talk about the use of school dude. Some of the buildings prefer to have their main secretary be the person who you, you inform that person, and then the secretary puts them all in, and some, everybody puts them in in the building. So it just, just, we need to communicate that way, because that way is, we're able to capture those results, compare and contrast those on a going-forward basis, and then make sure they're valid before moving forward. On a K-12 Insight Survey, you might say and do things differently than you would in school dude. And so we kind of saw those, compare and contrast that in the new KPIs.
We'd see that, that process is something with the building secretary that we implemented this year, went back to, because to your point, we've heard from our staff that there is frustration with the school dude process, sometimes even getting online, they're kicked off, their login doesn't work, and so some have given up. And so we wanted to make sure that we had multiple ways of, of entering the work orders. And so for some buildings, then, they'll utilize their secretary as, as another means. So they're getting that information, just calling down, and the secretary is then able to input that information for them. So we anticipate with these, and plant engineer is another person, with different methods for them to use, that we should see an increase in the number of school dude requests that would really support what we're seeing is the differences between the report of the school.
I'm looking for a strong degree of correlation between those things, and the fact that we don't really frustrates me, because it means that we either have a perceived problem, but not a real problem, because people aren't actually entering the issues, or we're just, we're not, we've, we've got a discrepancy there. So I appreciate the attention and focus on that.
Yep.
I, I have one other question.
Go ahead.
With respect to the operations process, the facility study that we're doing right now is kind of a monumental task. And one of the things I'd like to see us do is to create more of a, of a cycle process, where we're not doing every school in every, or all schools in 10 years, that we have a process where we do, much like we do with our curriculum. We have a cycle where we're going to do these schools this year, and then these other schools next year. So we have a continuously rolling 10-year plan instead of a 10-year plan every 10 years.
Yeah, so that's a great question, because I wrestle with, do we mess up everybody and do all parking lots in a year, and get a really good price on asphalt? Or do we do these five this year, really do them stem to stern, and then move on to the next? And so it's, it's, it's a decision we have yet to make, and, and we'll have to wrestle with that on a going-forward basis. You know what I'm saying? So you get, do you get better bid prices by doing a ton of, ton of work all over the place? Or do you get better pricing if you just concentrate on these five buildings this year? These five buildings this year, and this five buildings this year?
So I think that's a really good point. That was not actually what I was asking about. It was more about the, it was more about the, the surveys that we're doing around the things that we have to do to school.
So keeping those up.
Keeping those surveys up. So rather than trying to do all schools every 10 years and have a monumental task...
Right.
If we do three elementary schools a year, then those three schools every 10 years or every five years, their needs are refreshed. And it, it spreads the work out across, and at any given time, we could decide, you know what? We've got enough parking lots that we want to do, or we have enough of these deferred maintenances that we've done on something that we could decide that we want to do that at one point, to be able to do, to, to make it happen. But we're not waiting for 10 years to find out that those things are happening.
Right. So that's our plan, is to continue to get those upgrades on, our, the reports on roofing, paving, all the major mechanical systems, and continue to, to keep those fresh.
Okay, great. Because I, I see a great process that we've done with respect to curriculum, where we've got a cycle that happens there. If we could do the same thing with facilities, that would help.
Correct.
And, and then the last question I have was with respect to transportation. I didn't see anything in there with respect to the boundary study. You know, every five years, we have to do a boundary study, and transportation obviously has a big impact on that process.
Right. That's, but the, the last bullet was meant to encompass all of that, including a boundary study, so transportation alternatives as a result of committee work.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Other questions from colleagues? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to introduce our communication and marketing team to take us through their focus areas for marketing and communications.
And good evening. It's such a privilege to represent the marketing communications team this evening and present some of the great work being done with the dynamic plan, like all the departments that you've heard from tonight. Our number one priority is to support the work of teaching and learning in our school district, and to support students, families, and the greater community. If you look at our overall goal, we are a team of action. And if you look at the verbs in that goal, communicating, building, and connecting, that's what we do. And it's all in the name of supporting students and making sure that we give students and families in our district the very best experience as they navigate through PCCS. The first sub-goal to look at in our world is communication. We are celebrating not just 190 years of our school district, but one year of our new and improved PCCS mobile app. Last year, we shared with the board our goal to exceed 2,000 total downloads during the school year, and we were able to not just beat that, but exceed it. Our current number of downloads is 3,593. That's year-long work. That's a lot of promotion of the app. We think the app is not only a great tool for members of the community, students, and families to stay connected with the school district, but it will become the ultimate communication tool for us to use. And so we're thrilled to see that we were able to exceed that goal, but the work continues to make sure we spread the good word about our app. The website partnership with the University, University of Michigan School of Information has been a great thing for us. We've been able to make some improvements to the website. We've also been able to increase our traffic to our YouTube channel. Really, our, our Highway Media video campaign has been a huge part of that. We have 1,906 views of the full video, and we've seen that increase our number of subscribers to our YouTube channel. Again, utilizing all of our methods of communication, including YouTube, and that's at an all-time high, and we're really happy with that. And then, of course, using our communication outlets to support the, the essential and priority work of safety and security in our school district, with timely and very relevant communications regarding that essential work. So in the world of communication, as we say in our sub-goal, keep current, stay robust, and that's what we're certainly aiming to do as we continue with 2019, 20, and beyond. In the ever-changing world of media relations, some data just to back up kind of what's become our marquee media relations tool, which is our Learn, Prepare, Thrive District Updates, one of which launched today, along with a new addition of the LPTN3 podcast. We saw a 231% increase in average views of the podcast during 2018, 19 from the previous year. And so, again, we're pleased with that. We'll continue to utilize that as a communication tool, but also as a really important media relations tool. It's me, we've got a lot of feedback from media that that podcast gives them a nice snapshot of the major things going on in our district. Our goal will, will continue to be to consistently hit 1,000-plus views for each podcast. In media relations, we're going to work really hard this year to really strengthen our relationship with the observer again and reestablish our presence there. The observer's had a lot of structural changes, and we do have a new reporter with the observer. So we're really dedicated to strengthening that moving forward. And then, of course, huge work this year will be continuing to promote the work through our media relations of the facilities and boundary committee, the 10-year master plan, and any resulting plans and actions that will come from that work. Clearly, keeping our community updated and involved in that work will be paramount to that work moving forward, and utilizing our media relations to do that will be absolutely paramount to, to that, those particular actions. So we look forward to keeping a strong relationship with local media to promote those things. Community relations, obviously, you know, everything we do really is connecting PCCS to the local community. The K-12 Insight Survey continues to be one of the great ways to do that. More than anything, to create that two-way feedback that we talk about when we talk about communicating. Communication for PCCS is not one-way, it's two-way. And the K-12 Insight Survey gives us that opportunity to get that valuable, valuable feedback from our community and our staff. And in the fourth year of the survey, we saw another straight year of participation growth, as we shared with you last spring, when we shared the results of the survey. That, that's very intentional year-long work. That shows that there's trust in the survey and the reason, and trust in the reason for the survey. So we're going to continue that. We're going to look for another year of, of growth in that area. When it comes to partnerships, this has really been a, a way that we've elevated in the marketing communications department. And we're thrilled tonight, and thrilled every day, to have Frank Ruggiero back in the district as our Director of Partnerships and External Affairs. And when you talk about legacy moments, which is what our department talks a lot about, creating legacy moments, leaving a legacy for our school district, a lot of this partnership work is, is very clearly going to leave an amazing legacy for our students and for our community. And I'd like to welcome Frank up to discuss some of the major things he's been up to and what, what you can look forward to this school year. Frank?
Thrilled. Thrilled. Good evening, everyone. This past year has really been a great year for the, for the marketing communications department as it relates to partnerships, and I promise you, we're just getting going. There are a lot of things in this line of work that take some time, but we have some things coming down the pipe that I think you'll be very, very pleased with in the future. So while we've developed several partnerships this year that we're proud of, of course, we're going to focus on three that we think are of most interest to you. The first is our partnership with the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention. I know that's been of great interest to many of you. I am pleased to tell you that we have just 150 stu-, teachers left to train this year, and they will get that training on March 11th. And then all of our high school, middle school, and Starkweather staff will have had the first round of training through the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention. You're also probably aware that there was an all-middle-school parent coffee specifically related to this topic, and I'm proud to tell you that there's another one coming up with a different group, actually, with a group called Reset Mind and Body. That's, that's on this, coming up on the schedule. And they'll, they'll focus more on mental challenges that, that kids are facing, and again, all of the work is focused on strategies that our faculty, staff, and that parents can use to get help if they're seeing particular signs of, of issues with their children or with the children in our classrooms. In addition, I know many of you took part in our community forum last May. And then the student piece has been great, working with John Walker. He has that student security advisory board at the park, and we had several conversations last year. We will have more conversations this year. We know that the student voice is important in this. They've, they've told us that it's important, that, that suicide prevention, their concerns in this area. So we, we're looking for ways this year where the students will be getting involved. We'll, we'll report back to you on that as well. And then finally, after all of our faculty and staff are trained this year, it's important for us to do some evaluation of that work. Talk to our friends from, from American Foundation of Suicide Prevention, see what they heard and saw in those sessions they provided, and then talk to our team. You know, insert that feedback that we got, and then develop our next steps. So this is an ongoing process. As long as suicide is an issue in our schools, we'll continue to provide that information. So that's the first one I wanted to talk to you about. Secondly, this one connects to our school improvement plans, particularly for the middle schools. As we met this year, did a first round of, of conversations with the colleges and universities in the area, we found that they were, they are telling us, feedback from them, was that they need to see students at an earlier age, that by the time students get to high school, they are, have already made up their mind about where they're going to school in a lot of cases. So it was important for them to see students at middle school. When I shared this information with our principals, our middle school principals, they came back and said, you know what? That's really important. It fits right with our school improvement plan with some of the new issues on the school improvement plan that we have to fulfill, about getting our students exposed to different opportunities that are there for them. Now, we all know that, and I, I'm a proud Michigan State graduate, my daughter goes to Michigan State, but we also know that our families, our kids are seeing Michigan and Michigan State. They're going to Ann Arbor, they're going to East Lansing. So a lot of our focus has been on the really fine institutions that are around us, institutions like EMU, like the University of Michigan Detroit, Dearborn, like Lawrence Tech, Schoolcraft, and Wayne State, because we want to get them exposed to the other things that are there. These are really fine institutions that have some great programs and some great facilities for students to take advantage of. So this year, all five of our middle schools will be sending their eighth graders on campus tours to all of these schools. And so it's a pilot program this year. If it works out well, we're hoping in a couple of years, we might be able to have our kids have two, three experiences before they even get to, to high school. So that's the plan, that's the goal, that's what we're working on. The final one I want to talk to you about, this one is, is on the horizon. It's pretty exciting. Many of you may know, Kate, I know you were around when we were developing the academies at the park. We talked about, there are three academies at the park. We had always talked about a fourth academy. We talked about a business academy, and that's one of the projects we're working on right now. I can't say for sure this is going to happen, but we're feeling pretty confident about where we are. This plan will involve two institutions of higher learning. It will involve connecting some, some of the business curriculum at the park. It will include a community college experience and then a, a university experience at the end, and possibly at the end, a bonus for students where less time in school and a master's degree at the end of the, at the end of the rainbow. So we're excited about that. We'll tell you more as that develops. We have a big meeting early in October with some high officials from, from the schools that we're talking to, and we think we'll have some things to report to you soon. So with that, that's our report on partnerships.
Thanks, Frank. And Frank will, will certainly be involved in the future of the Blue Ribbon Panel, which is one other aspect of community relations that we continue to, to really value and be excited about. Definitely, there's a future for the Blue Ribbon Panel, and we're putting together plans for that, and we're looking forward to getting that established again during 2019, 20, and really gathering a lot of community leaders and local leaders to, to become, to continue to be strong allies of the school district. So we look forward to the continuing work of the panel as well. In the area of, of marketing and branding, when it comes to marketing, we're really looking at early childhood this year as a focus for our team during 2019, 20. We've spoken before about our, our marketing plan really revolving around the bookends of the PCCS experience, looking at that, those entry points, which high school is one of our, I'm sorry, early childhood is one of our best entry points, and then that end-of-the-tunnel idea, which is the high school experience. So really focusing on PCP and Starkweather Academy, and marketing those two aspects of our district really heavily as the entry point, and then kind of that final chapter. This year, we're really going to focus again on early childhood marketing, with a real emphasis on enrollment. Last year, we did some really important branding work, establishing a new logo for early childhood, really turning it into a brand more than anything else. And we look forward to this year continuing some strong marketing efforts to focus on increasing enrollment for our early childhood program. And then for our exit survey, giving us that really valuable feedback from families and students who choose elsewhere and choose other educational options, we're going to increase how much we administer the exit survey that we currently do, to try and get even more feedback and more, more timely feedback from that particular exit work. And lastly, in the areas of branding, like we started with, 190 years of PCCS, really building a legacy of celebration. That's a huge part of 190. Certainly, it's to celebrate our district's incredible history, which we're doing in a lot of different ways, with a lot of different avenues. But we also want to teach ourselves how a celebration works. We have so many milestones in this district, and 190 will be a great way to teach us how to build that legacy of celebration in our school district and in our community. And there's a lot of work that is still on the horizon for 190, and we're really excited about it. And then we've seen record-high turnouts for our two major community events, our open community events, which is our 2018 PCP Community Open House, and of course, our 2019 Back-to-School Bash. The turnouts were absolutely incredible. Again, it's, it's year-long work that comes to fruition in, in one event, and really focusing on those events being open to all in the community, giving everyone the experience to come and check out PCCS, to come and see what PCP is all about. And again, the record-high turnouts for those are something that will continue to really put an emphasis on moving forward. And next year's Back-to-School Bash, continue to put an emphasis on having as many district programs represented during that amazing day as we can. Above all, like we said, supporting the work of teaching and learning, supporting the work of students and families in our district. And we really want to thank the Board of Education for all your support of our team and giving us the opportunity to do this great work. And of course, at this time, we'd be happy to take any input or questions for our team.
Member Berninski, it's on her hand first, and then member Kehoe?
So I, I'm going to give you a challenge, Nick. You may not be happy with me. But I think you do a really good job of communicating out these big events, like the Back-to-School Bash and 190 Days of PCCS events, things like that. There are some other things that I think need to be a little more timely. One example is the late start day and the plan, the bus, all that information to parents. They need that when school starts. So they can't get the information a week before, because childcare situations may not happen, you know, in less than a week. So that's my challenge to you.
I guess it's a great challenge. It's great feedback.
I also, I'm really glad that you're going to be working on the relationship with the observer. I've noticed that some of the articles that have been coming out lately have had some inaccuracies in them, and I think that the more you can form that relationship, the better for us.
Appreciate that. It's definitely a priority, no question.
Okay. And then for Frank, I'm wondering, for the, with the partnership for the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, I'm excited that you, you said you've only got 150 teachers left to train. Could you give us an idea of... Could you give us an idea of how that's trickling down to students and what kind of information they're getting?
I can't be specific about what's happening in the classroom, I'm not there, but I can tell you that all the training is focused on getting the people the support that they need. So it was really presenting a lot of resources for faculty and staff. We also found that in some cases, many of our teachers at Starkweather, some of the training that they got was a little bit on the, it was elementary, they'd had quite a bit of training. And then for a lot of our middle school teachers who had never had a lot of this training before, it was really valuable. So again, this is where the evaluation stage will come in, where we'll be able to give you maybe a little bit more feedback on what's happening in the classroom, but I can't speak specifically to it at this time.
Okay, do we have any, I wouldn't call it training, but any programming for students around this?
There is a module with American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. I think that's, again, as we sit down and talk about, finish with Phase One, how will we implement that? And then again, we're looking for the student voice with the committee at the high school, and we want to see where they want to go as well, too.
Okay.
Initially, our focus was to get the training to the staff, that was most important, so that they had the resources for anyone who was struggling.
Right, definitely. But I think it's also important that students understand that the staff has got this training and that they're their resource if they are struggling. Because we want kids to know, hey, come to us, please. And I remember when we had the presentation from the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, and there were a lot of components that he talked about, and in fact, one of them was like the march that they do. And so I'm just, I'm eager to hear about more for us.
Okay, thank you.
Remember Kehoe?
Yeah, to add on what Kate said about that and the suicide prevention, you know, I think that, I don't want us to wait until 2020, 2020-21 before we start educating the students. If we've got teachers, for example, at the high school that are already trained, but we haven't trained all the ones at the elementary, then can we be selective about rolling out these programs later on this year for students? You know, we had some really unfortunate situations that happened last year, and I don't want us to drag our feet on this. So I'd like to see how we can look at rolling this process out, to what Kate said, you know, the student awareness of the programs and the work that's there, but it's also the parent awareness. So we should use our communications process to let people know that we are doing this program. We should make this vocal and front and center as part of all the activities. And if there's an opportunity for, even if it's a specific school where the teachers have been trained, to bring that training forward for those students this year, not next year.
So I do want to step in and say, I never want the message to leave this table that we're dragging our feet on this initiative. And so 100% all understand the urgency of the topic, and making sure that, one thing I will say that we do a lot in our district is implement very quickly. And we know that when we do implement so quickly, we often fail. And so we want to make sure that we have solid implementation plans. And so what we can come back, and I know, as you said, just asking that question without preparing to answer that, we can come back and really talk about the implementation plan and what is really in process. We can provide that information for you. But our goal is to make sure that we are educating all, we have a strong implementation plan that can sustain the effort, and that we're doing it well because it's too important not to do it.
Great, so maybe you can share with us that implementation plan and how that rolls out to the students, to the support staff, to the bus drivers, to the GRBS staff, to everybody that's happening, because I think this is really so important.
Absolutely.
So I have more questions, of course.
If you don't mind, just to carry on that conversation, and just to reiterate the urgency, I appreciate the forum that you had, that you coordinated for the parents. I'm wondering if there's a plan to coordinate another parent forum?
There certainly could be. I mean, we certainly could do another parent forum, again.
I think that would be great.
Yeah, again, we'll be sitting down shortly, our team will be sitting down, and now Beth is with us, too. So we'll be sitting down and having conversations about what this year's plan looks like, so we'll share that information with you.
Great, because it wasn't as big as we had anticipated, so I think another opportunity for parents to find out about this program and come to that session. And I know that they had student resources, which were then put on the website. So one of my questions is, are you working with the school counselors, in addition to teachers and the social workers, about the resources and putting them in the same place? Are they all going to the same resource bank?
I can tell you that the school counselors have a great deal of training in this area. Probably, they're well beyond what we've been presented at the first point. And they do have those resources, and they are working with the students on a regular basis, so. Yeah, I believe we're moving forward, it's just, again, we'll continue to do this work as long as it's an issue in our schools, absolutely. And we'll let you know, absolutely.
Okay, appreciate it. Before, left side, yes?
I just have a quick statement to say, Nick and Frank, I think you guys are doing a great job. It's a hard job, and I think you guys are doing a really good job. It's a...
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got more questions. Remember Kehoe?
Yeah, so with respect to community relations, right now I see that we're doing work with Wayne, I'm sorry, with U of M and, I'm sorry, hold on.
Partnerships.
The partnerships. We have student-teacher partnerships with Michigan State, Eastern Michigan, and U of M Dearborn. You know, with our focus on getting racial diversity, why do we not have a partnership with Wayne State, especially if we're already working with them to do a business academy?
So Frank and I met with representatives from Wayne State University, and at this time, right now, they have a very solid partnership with Detroit Community Schools, and that's where they are going to stay. They know we are open and willing, but right now, that is where their partnership is.
Okay, fair enough. So we've tried.
Absolutely.
And I think Eastern and U of M Dearborn have a lot of diversity.
No, I know, it's just, we've made great strides this year, and I'd love to see us continue doing more of that to make it so that our teachers are reflective of that. The second one was, as you mentioned, Reset Mind and Body. I think they run great programs. I think they run great programs, but I think that we need to make sure that when we do that presentation, that we make sure that the community is aware that they do have, they do have a sliding scale as well as pro bono programs that are available for that, because I wouldn't want people to think that those activities are only available for pay.
Okay. Yeah, the middle school principals are working on that right now.
Okay, great.
I'll pass it along.
And then...
Oh, go ahead.
And then two questions for you, Nick. One is the exit survey you do twice a year, is that, is that an email survey? Is that a phone survey? How does that work?
It's an email survey, but we ask for phone contact as well, and then we follow up with phone calls for those who share that with us and who give us basically consent to follow up with them. So it's kind of two-tiered. And we currently administer it once a year, but what we're going to do this year is administer it twice. So that's what we mean by increasing it.
So I guess my question is, is there a reason why we're not doing that at the moment that someone leaves? So if they put in notice to leave a week later?
So right now, we just are able to gather the data a lot easier when we kind of do it once or twice a year. We can get a large collection and administer the survey at one time to the whole group. And that's why we wanted to increase it to two. So eventually, we might increase it more, but right now, again, kind of, this is a new process for us, so to increase it from once a year to twice a year feels like a good next step. And then we'd certainly be open to increasing it more times if that makes sense moving forward.
Yeah, I guess my perspective is on any kind of survey, you get far, you get far better quality of the answers if you do that after the event. So, you know, if someone puts in notice to leave, that you could configure the system so that a week later, you automatically get the survey. And so it becomes not something that you and your team have to do that work manually, but we link that into the IT system so that when we know someone has left, then we have that happen. And it would be a better way for us to get more timely answers into the process.
That's good input, thank you.
And along the same lines, I think that we've discussed this before, is having an administrator contact those people, and to actually call them and have that conversation, so that we have a, you know, I know that when I take a survey, I answer maybe 10% of the surveys that I get. That's, and I'm a prolific survey taker. Whereas many people, if they got a call from the principal at that school or from somebody at the administration, you're far more likely to get candid, real information about that process rather than waiting for six months or, you know, six months at this point to be able to do that and have an email-based survey. And I think this is really crucial data for us to understand why people might be leaving us. If they're leaving us because they moved out of the district or something like that, that makes sense. But even at that point, there's an opportunity to get feedback from them that says why they, what they liked and what they disliked about the district.
Yep, and that's all part of the survey.
And I was going to say, I know you didn't share this, but we actually talked about that a couple court meetings ago, and Mr. Tiskowitz was actually able to give us the exact number of students that have exited and the reasons why. And so we talked about how we can work together with our building principals to, you know, some if they're out of state, and that's some, you know, that can go in every six-month process. But if somebody just left to go to a local charter.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we're already having those conversations about how we can, beyond the survey, just have some intentional reach-out to parents that are...
And our follow-up phone calls are just as valuable as the survey, because then we're able to engage in conversation with those who take it.
The follow-up phone calls only happen to somebody that answers the survey and gives you their phone number. Whereas we have their contact information now, you know, we could call them, we don't necessarily have to wait for permission to do that. So I had one other question. Okay, I don't know if anybody else has?
I have.
Go ahead.
Well, first I want to comment, just give you a quick comment. The college business, or the business academy that you're exploring, kudos to you on that one. Looking forward to hearing more. And the video that has gone out, the YPCCS, the highway video, has been phenomenal, well-received. Anytime I show it to somebody, they're like, wow, this is amazing work. So kudos to both of you on that one. I have a question about the app, or maybe it's a different system. If there's a way to get push notifications on text messages as opposed to the robocalls about some of these events, some of these updates, is that something that you've looked into?
Absolutely, yeah. We're in the process right now of upgrading our push notification system so we can do more of them, and so they can be stored in the app itself. And we're close to having that done, because we think that's extremely important, because without question, the future of this information is push notifications in an app more than anything else. So we are, we are right at the end of that work, and it's going to be a great upgrade to the app.
And the text messages?
Yeah, so they'll come through as, in the same way that a text message would, and they'll be stored in the app permanently. So if one misses it, they can open up the app and see what they missed.
So there's two separate things. One is the push notifications within the app itself, but the other is, when we get these robocalls, I wonder if there's a system that will allow us to do text messages in addition to the robocalls or just text messages?
Yeah, there is a text function within our current robocall system, but we haven't been able to find consistency with that particular aspect of the system. So we've looked at other systems and see what's out there, but our representative from RISA tells us that the text message system will work, and we'll look into making sure that that consistently works for us.
Great.
Because you're right, that should be, in addition, a compliment to the robocall.
Okay, thank you.
Good bet.
Go ahead, remember Kehoe?
On that subject, the social media and the notification process, I'm seeing a lot more people, at least in Plymouth, that are starting to use Nextdoor. Have we started looking at that? I don't know if that's widely used in other parts of the community.
Canton uses it.
But I'm, you know, it seems to be an emerging, very hyper-localized social media platform that may allow us to reach our community members, both that attend the school as well as those that are not. I recognize the focus and the importance of the relationships with The Observer, but the nature of community outreach is changing. And I think that, you know, we do a great job on Twitter and on Facebook in that process, but I think we could also look at some of these new platforms like that to see if that might reach people.
It's a great suggestion on Nextdoor, we'll certainly look into it. And we did add Instagram this year to better reach students. We wanted to keep students as a priority for us in terms of social media.
Instead of just their grandparents.
And we've seen great response, more student involvement with our social media through our Instagram launch, so that's a great suggestion, we'll look into that.
Great, and then...
Disconnect that during some note days that aren't...
And I have one last question, but go ahead.
Well, this has to do with Nextdoor. I was just going to say that the Canton Police Department uses it, or the Canton Public Safety Department does, with Patty S. Link, so you might want to have a chat with her.
It's a great suggestion, we have a great relationship with her and them, so we can do that. Thank you.
And then the last area I have is, much like Kate, I have a challenge to you. I would like to see us do targeted marketing to families that are in our district but not attending our schools, but going to public schools. We've talked about this a number of times. I did not see it up there, and that kind of saddened me, because I think that whether it be a direct mail campaign or some other mechanism to reach those students that are not attending our schools to let them know about YPCCS. I think we have the best programs here, I think we have the best teachers, the best administration, the best programs as part of this process. And I think that doing that targeted marketing activity could not, would not cost us significantly. There's something like 2,700 students. Yes, there would be costs in doing a printing and a mailing there, but it's an opportunity for us to reach those families while they're making those considerations. So doing a program or a campaign in July or August and letting them know about what's happening and saying that there's now time to enroll, there's a chance to see all the great things that are here, inviting them to the open houses, to do the things, to really let people know about the great things that we have. Because I think in some cases, we've lost people because of familiarity of that or other things, and they don't really, don't have the awareness of what's happening. I think we do a fantastic job of communicating to the people that are in the district, but I think that there's more opportunities to reach some of those. And I know that we're not going to catch all of them. I know that there's reasons that people choose, and that is their choice, but I think that if we can let them know about all the fantastic things that we have, that would maybe get some of those people back here.
I would definitely say that that is, we've had a lot of conversations around that, and everything that just didn't show up in a bullet, we need to make sure that we're talking about it, so it doesn't mean that it's not being done. And so as we picked highlights, but that's something that we've been talking about just as the last couple of months, is really how we're utilizing our community ed message that goes out to just not just resident people that are non, and just being more intentional with that, the cost behind it.
And above all, I want to agree with you, we are the best. So if we can just agree with that, we are.
Exactly.
The community ed brochure is a great piece for us. It gets sent to, you know, all families in the community. We certainly utilize that very intentionally as a communication and marketing piece. And the other thing, too, is we boost Facebook boasts to well beyond just the people who follow us. So we do a lot of boosting to try and reach those exact markets. So I agree with you, direct mail is always something we look at, it's always something we weigh the cost against the result, and we'll continue to do that. But we do, certainly do intentional work to reach those groups.
There should be, there could be some great hyper-targeting that we do with that, to be able to create a really personalized campaign, and I'd welcome a chance to collaborate with you on that.
All right. Thank you.
So rounding us out for the evening is the heart and soul of why we are here, teaching and learning, led by our Chief Academic Officer, Beth Rail.
Good evening, Board, and welcome. So we're excited to share with you the updates to our teaching and learning plan. So previously, you've seen this overarching slide and this overarching portion of the dynamic plan that has a lot of tasks in it. So tonight, what we're going to do is share with you that based on data from the Comprehensive Needs Assessment, a review of our dynamic plan, our district improvement plan, and the subgroup plan, we've determined that these tasks really fall into three overarching strategic objectives. And Anthony Ruela, our Executive Director of Middle School's Data and School Improvement, is going to talk to you about these three and how we came about those.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. To understand how we develop these strategic objectives, it's important to know a little bit of background. So last year, we were fortunate enough as a teaching and learning department to welcome a few new colleagues to the team. And as part of our onboarding process and team-building process, we worked to develop a list of values that were shared by all. So while it was extremely powerful to gain a deep understanding of the many professional and personal values that our team members held, in the end, we all agreed that we have such a belief in the concepts of simplicity, community, integrity, leadership, and student success, that these will be the core values that will guide all of our actions moving forward as a team. So after exploring these shared values and analyzing our Comprehensive Needs Assessment, reviewing the plans that Ms. Rail mentioned earlier, we concluded that we needed to live our value of simplicity. And we, thus, we needed to synthesize our complex work into three interconnected strategic objectives. So these strategic objectives that you see on the slide represent the overarching themes of the strategies and activities in our dynamic plan as well as the district improvement plan. They emphasize our commitment to ensuring that students receive a culturally responsive education through the implementation of a comprehensive, multi-tiered systems of support, which in turn is grounded in that vertically aligned, standards-based, pre-K-12 curriculum. We're confident that in, that developing these strategic objectives has brought greater focus to our work as a team and that they will clearly communicate to all of our stakeholders the major initiatives that we believe are critical to meeting the academic and social emotional needs of all Plymouth Canton Community Schools students. And at this time, I'd like to bring Dr. Lilly back up. It's my honor. I love the fact that we are working so closely together again. You guys really don't know. And Dr. Lilly is going to talk to you about our first strategic objective.
So you should probably clarify what that references, because many may not know.
Dr. Lilly and I came into the district together as the team at Central Middle School, oh gosh, about a dozen years ago. So it, it's like getting the band back together. So I love this lady and I am, I can't believe it. So it's awesome. So thank you for allowing me to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Walla. So again, as Mr. Walla just referenced, we have three strategic objectives that we are focusing on this year and throughout the next couple of years, and first being the culturally responsive practices. And so the objective is all schools will be culturally responsive learning communities through increasing the use of culturally responsive practices by all staff by June thirtieth of 2022. And so when we think about this and kind of going back to what you had asked me earlier, Mr. Keel, with regard to, how do we ensure that our students are not suffering? How do we ensure that they feel represented? And when they come into the classrooms, the environment is such that they want to be there, that they feel appreciated and valued. The teaching and learning team decided that we wanted to create a definition that would embody our true belief statements within Plymouth Canton Community Schools. You all know that you could Google right now the definition for cultural responsiveness and you could find five hundred different iterations of what that definition is. We said we want to make sure that we are living this definition every single day. And so that is, it is the responsibility of all stakeholders to ensure that all students are successful. Our voices, experience, perspectives, and cultures within our community must be respected and valued. Excellence requires adaptability, flexibility, openness, and risk-taking. Cultural responsive pedagogy is grounded in the development of meaningful relationships, inclusive environments, and the use of instructional strategies, methods, and materials that ensure equity for all students. So moving forward, that is our definition that we are grounded in and the work that we're doing. So with regard to the work for the 2019-2020 school year, restorative practice training for elementary classroom teachers. So we are very fortunate that we've had an opportunity to continue our partnership with Black Family Development. We actually started our next level of training yesterday with fifth grade teachers who did not receive the training last year. And they had great rave reviews. They were very excited. Many of them didn't know what to expect yesterday because they were going to be out for two days. And coming back today, they were very, very happy. They're very excited about being able to go back to the classroom tomorrow and actually implement some of the strategies they've used, or excuse me, that they've learned over this last two days. So again, we're looking to have first grade through fifth grade trained by December third of this school year. And we wanted to give kindergarten teachers some time to get acclimated with their students. We have, they're the babies. So they are going, we're looking at a tentative date of April fourteenth and fifteenth in the spring. So by that time, well, all our general education classroom teachers will have received the training. So we're excited about that. We also recognize that we still have middle school and high school teachers that need to be trained. And so we're looking at a couple of different delivery models to make sure that we're reaching them because again, we recognize the urgency. And so in having some conversation, we also recognize that we don't want to continue to pull people out of the classroom. So we're looking at possibly doing some training over the summer with the middle school and high school teachers. With regard to professional development at each level to support administrative knowledge and practices, as I mentioned earlier, we have the implicit bias and microaggression training coming up on October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth with the Michigan Roundtable for Diversity and Inclusion. So again, those are things that we want to make sure that we are looking at ourselves and saying, okay, what is it that we're doing? What are things that may be pushing people away and feeling that they're not, they're not valued in our school building? So those are things that are on the horizon right now. And then the last initiative, increased outreach to engage community members in our district. So we recognize that we have a phenomenal group of people that we work with in our school district, but we also recognize that we have phenomenal community members. And so we want to make sure that they are at the table with us, that they're on the front lines with us working. And so we're looking at different partnerships, whether it's with, again, the Michigan Roundtable for Diversity and Inclusion, the Beloved Community, PFLAC, a variety of different organizations and agencies to make sure that we have representation for all of our students and families. And with that, I will turn it over to Mrs. Julie Woodhams, our Executive Director for Specialized Instruction.
Good evening, everyone. I am thrilled to be here to share some information about our second objective, our second strategic objective. And this is a critical objective that focuses on a framework for a multi-tiered support system for all students, commonly referred to as MTSS. And specifically, we will evaluate, design, and revise by June thirtieth of 2020 and consistently implement by June 2021, a comprehensive, multi-tiered system of support, or MTSS, framework that provides needed supports for the academic, social, emotional, and behavioral growth of all pre-K through twelfth grade students. So big work. And what's, what's interesting here is the MTSS framework is most commonly represented by a pyramid. And this pyramid has expanded over the last few, over the last few years. It has expanded to embrace the whole child that you'll see on the right side of the screen. And this is just a really important focus because previously, we focused mostly on academics. But we now realize how important it is to equally focus on behavior supports as well as overall wellness for students. And that really takes a look at health, conflict resolution, and probably most specifically, social emotional learning. The other piece that's really interesting about this MTSS framework is it now takes a look at pre-K through twelve. So we know that we must have a comprehensive plan pre-K through twelve. And because of this expansion, especially our social emotional learning expansion, and embracing all the work that has been done over the past several years for MTSS in our district, we have created three critical action steps that we believe will move us forward to, so that we can end up with a very comprehensive MTSS framework. The first action step, we will conduct a gap analysis. And that means that we are going to look at our current practices. We are going to really look at what's being implemented in our buildings and throughout our district. And we want to determine what missing pieces we have, especially given the expand, expanded framework. What are we missing? What supports are we missing? What procedures are we missing? What gaps do we have? And then we want to finalize our pre-K-12 MTS framework using that information about our gaps. How do we fill in those gaps so that we can create that very comprehensive MTSS framework? We want to ensure that it's implemented with all the critical components that MTSS requires. And then finally, we will develop a system for implementation by the 2021 year. And we want to make sure that that implementation ensures accountability and consistency so that we can ensure success for all students. So it's big work, but we are thrilled and excited because we think it's really, really important work. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Deirdre, Dr. Deirdre Brady, Director of Curriculum and Professional, Professional Development, whatever it is. And she is going to talk about objective number three. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Julie. So our third objective really connects the other two pieces together, interweaving the culturally responsive practices with the MTSS structure into our curriculum process. So specifically, by the end of the 2021-22 school year, we want to develop and consistently implement a pre-K through twelfth grade vertically aligned, standards-based curriculum and assessment in all areas. So this is probably not a surprise to you. I've been before the board many times talking about the importance of that. And while I've come before you, I've shared with you a curriculum cycle process that we are now using for our curriculum development. Though what you see looks a little bit different than it looked in past, last year when I came because I've woven in all contents underneath me now rather than only the core content areas. So for example, when you're, what you'll notice as I have Visual and Performing Arts or VAPA that's now underneath me. PE is now underneath me, media, world language. So all, all content is following the exact same process and is wrapped into the ultimately six-year cycle. So this has been updated so that the columns now start with this school year, so that we're shifting forward. And we've rolled out one additional school year to the twenty-four, twenty-five. So it's a lot to look at. There's a lot on there now with adding in the new contents. So I'd like to just provide you a few highlights that you understand where we're, where, where we are with implementing the curriculum and instruction. At the pre-K level, we are working on professional development with assessment work. Learning targets, MTSS, as Julie had indicated, will be part of their work as well. And then also program evaluation to look at how our pre-K areas functioning. In the elementary level, we have several curriculums that are being rolled out this year, which I've talked to about last year. That's writing, word study, and science curriculum are all new for the elementary teachers this year. While that's new, we have some curriculum work that's still occurring. And so now that all of those other contents are coming underneath, underneath me, you'll notice that some of those are, are, are things that need to have some curriculum looked at. So for example, the art and music curriculum was revamped a few years ago. But once you roll something out, you need to come back to it and make sure that what you've created is working well for students. And so we want the art and music elementary teachers to be able to come back and look at their assessments to make sure it's measuring what we intended to measure and just taking a look at it one more time. This past year, we started the library media curriculum, but it's something we need to continue to do. There are new technology standards from the state and we're, we want to make sure that those are woven into our curriculum. One place that that fits is the library media, so that work is being done. And then in addition to the new, the new rollouts and the curriculum work for those items, we also have a math pilot that is currently occurring. We have two different resources that are being looked at in addition to the everyday math, which is our current resource. So we're doing curriculum work and we're looking to see if there's other resources that better fit our needs at this time. At the middle school, we also have new curriculum, lots of new curriculum. We are rolling out brand new ELA, that's in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And we have new science curriculum for sixth through eighth grade. We are revising the library media curriculum. I've spoken to the board in the past in regards to things needing to be at a pre-K-12 range instead of it by level because then you get better consistency vertically. And so you'll notice that the library media curriculum is all areas are revising. So we have that already in a K-12 alignment. And then for social studies at the middle school, there are new standards that were also adopted this past year for social studies this past June. And that, we are already on top of that. We already know that that was, knew that was coming and, and we're being responsive. So we have a pilot that's happening in all grades, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and curriculum work that's being done. At the high school level, curriculum work is being, being done and rolled out. We have a brand new ninth and tenth grade ELA curriculum. We have a new geometry curriculum rolled out, and then we're continuing our science work, which is something that Anupam had, had referred to earlier that I talked about at Spots. So more to come on that. Well, you'll get more information in, in the near future. We are revising this year several contents as well. Algebra two is being revised. Our eleventh and twelfth grade ELA curriculum is being revised. And then again, the library, library media piece. And then to go with the social studies pilot that's happening at the middle school level, we also have civics being piloted. So not all social studies content, but the civics is being piloted and curriculum work being done. And the other social studies content at the high school will be done in the following year. The board has been extremely supportive of my team and knowing the, the scope of the work that needs to be done. And so we did add some people with the board's support onto the team. And so we thought it was important for you to see who are these people? Who are the people who are working every day with our teachers to help them? Dr. Lilly earlier tonight referred to some of those restorative practices pieces. That, that's the work of my coaches, is to make sure that they know what, what is coming at them with, from a curriculum standpoint, but also having that instructional practice behind them to be able to support the work. So you'll notice that I'm on there as the director. I have four curriculum coordinators. And they now oversee, so past years, they oversaw one core content. Now you'll notice that they oversee multiple pieces. So they'll have one core content. So Carrie, for example, is ELA, but then she also picked up the library and the media piece that was previously under a different director. In addition to curriculum coordinators, there are five point two coaches at the high school, at the high school level. They consistently stay at the high school. They teach for most of their day. And then they have, one hour of their day is dedicated to coaching colleagues. In addition to the five of them, we have six full-time coaches. And they vary between elementary, we have, or secondary. And we have one coach who is K-three full-time literacy support to go along with the legislation behind that, behind that work. Okay? This time, I'm going to turn it back to Ms. Rail.
So as we continue to build and grow a legacy of excellence for students, we want to thank the board and the community members for, for putting supports in place to do this work. Some of the additional supports that were put in place this year include the ones you see on the slide. We've had five additional social workers and two clinical behavior support specialists that help provide MTSS supports for us. We've increased EL staff supports to help our English language learners. And we've increased the instructional coaching support using Title II funds this year. So again, thank you for that. As we focus on our three strategic objectives, we want you to know that the tasks from our original version of the dynamic plan have not been abandoned. But what is happening is we're integrating those into our three overarching strategic objectives. For example, technology is really integral to both an MTSS framework as well as a K-12 vertically aligned curriculum. That's just one example from here. As a team, we're going to continue to monitor data and program outcomes to ensure that all of our programs, positions, and resources are making the necessary impact on our students' academic, socio-emotional, and behavioral outcomes. As we establish what is working, based on our data, we're going to continue to monitor this through the budget process and come to you and talk more about needs and things as we move forward. But what we really want to do is we want to ensure that we leave a legacy of high achievement for each and every young person we serve. So with that, we're going to take some questions and input from you. So we're happy to do so.
I always have questions. I always have questions, but you can go ahead.
Member McCoyn?
So I really like how you've got it like boiled down into like three big goals. And I really like that it has a time on it. Like, that is so amazing.
That's a credit to the amazing work this team did over the last few months to really gel and really come together around those strategic objectives. So they've done phenomenal work around that, and I'm proud to be a part of this team.
Yeah, that is just, that's amazing to have, you know, a timeline that we could look at.
Any other on this side before I move to the right? Okay. Member Keel?
So again, I'd echo Ms. McCoyn's comments because they were, you know, I appreciate that we're not here till eleven o'clock or midnight going through each and every line item.
I was going to make a joke at the beginning, but, like, are you sitting down for our three hours?
I mean, I think that you, you highlighted some of the really big, important work that we're doing. I also appreciate the fact that you called out that the items that were on the previous slide, the whole list, are not being ignored. They're just, may not have as much focus. The, the ask I would have for, for you and for Monica is to give us some feedback on that overall list. I know it's a really detailed one, but there's, there's items that have been on the list for, for years with no movement and no progress. And I know that we've got really important priorities and there's, there's reasons why we've done that. But I know there's also other items on that list that are moving forward. So if we can just get some guidance and feedback as to which ones are moving forward and which ones we've not actioned yet, I think that would be helpful for us just to understand where there's progress and where there's still work that needs to be done.
Absolutely.
And then the second question I had was, two, two other questions. One is on the gap analysis. What's the process that you're doing for the gap analysis and the MTSS?
So the first thing we're going to do is we're going to start to kind of collate all of the things that we have right now. So the, the beginning level of that gap analysis are looking at all of the procedures we have in place. What's happening right now? What's working? And what feedback can we get on those things that, that maybe should be selectively abandoned? So what, what's not happening there? And then as we look at that, if you're familiar with something called MYKIP, and if you're not yet, you will be because we'll be presenting more on MTSS. You know, this is not a one and done on MTSS for you. But the MYKIP program is out of the Michigan Department of Ed, and it's really about the holistic student. So we'll also look at the MYKIP practices and align to see what are we missing currently based on that work at the, at the state level as well, as well as, you know, look at what other districts that are doing this highly effectively have in place so that we can take a look at what, what gaps we have and how we, you know, can bridge those gaps.
And towards that end, is that gap analysis largely run within the Teaching and Learning Department? Or are you involving the stakeholders, I'm sorry, at the administration level? Or are you involving the people out in the, in the schools to, to support that gap analysis?
It'll be a multi-tiered system to, a multi-tiered system for MTSS.
It'll be a multi-tiered system to, a multi-tiered system for MTSS. Let me, let me rephrase that a bit differently. It'll be a multi-process, a multi-phase process. We'll start within teaching and learning to analyze those things first, and then we'll go out and get building-level leaders or leader feedback, and then we'll also be looking at stakeholder feedback. Obviously, we'll need to hear from teachers. We'll need to hear from our behavior specialists. We'll need to hear from our counselors and folks. What's, what's happening? What's working? So.
And I appreciate all the hard work that you guys have to do to do that, especially with being able to implement that kind of program next year with Fidelity. And the last question I had is a really simple one. On the curriculum cycle, how long is that curriculum cycle?
Six years.
So six-year cycle?
It's a five-year cycle.
That's what I thought.
That, but you see six years.
Right. So when I was looking at that, I noticed that, for example, you know, just picking one of them, and I, I opened up the, the actual full cycle. I noticed that we have, like, the, the K-through-eight art. K-through-eight art is in reviewing and planning this year, is in developing next year, is in, is in implementation in twenty-one, twenty-two, and then it goes into evaluating and adjusting as K-eight art and K-12 art in, in the, the next three years. So does it ever come back to?
It, it will.
Okay.
So the reason that it does that, and it's not a clean five-year cycle at this time, is because I have different levels in different places. And in order to get them K-12, some levels will need to sit in one phase a little bit longer than you normally would have them sit for others to catch up to their phasing. You need to get it to really a pre-K-12. That way, you're having vertical articulation between levels. So you'll notice that some might sit for only four years, just in this first time around. Others might sit in six. But you'll, if you look at the, at the end, like the twenty-four, twenty-five timeframe, you'll notice that things start saying.
K-12.
That's right.
Okay.
So you'll, so, and you'll notice it'll be less busy, because right now, it's, everything is very separate, but as we go out in time, it become, it's easier to read because things are condensed a little bit more.
Okay, so for example, I see K-12 ELA is in twenty-one, twenty-two. So in just three years, we'll have completed the cycle and we'll come back around for K-12, but ELA will be aligned for K-12.
And so our eleven, twelve curriculum will be rather new when we come back to look at it again. So at that time, will we need to overhaul eleven, twelve ELA? Probably not.
Got it.
But it will have been many years since we've looked at, maybe probably about six years at that point, that we will have looked at elementary reading particularly. But we want to get things better aligned so that we're looking at it K-12. So I know it sounds strange, but we want our kindergarten teachers to know what's happening in twelfth grade, and we want our twelfth-grade teachers to know what's happening in kindergarten.
It's fantastic. It's a great, great program, and I'm, I'm so excited about the way you guys are doing this.
I am so happy I'm making you excited.
Great.
I'll take that, rather than a difficult question.
I have no other question, so.
Member Berninski?
Going back to the gap analysis, I was just wondering if you have a timeframe for when that's, process is going to be done?
We, I, I can get back to you on that and give you a firm timeframe. Our goal is to do it sooner rather than later. First thing we're going to have to do is see the extent of what's already here. So we will certainly keep you appraised of how that's happening. It's, it's not going to be a multi-year process. It's going to be, but I can't also say it's going to be a multi-month process. Obviously, we're going to be taking a look at everything that's there, and being pretty new myself, I don't know the extent of what's there. The team has some additional kind of input in that and stuff, but compiling it is the first step, and that's the step we're starting to take now.
Okay. And that wasn't to put you on the spot.
No, no, no. I wish I could give you a more firm answer, and I will as soon as we kind of see the scope of the work.
Right. And, and along that lines, along that line with all the things that you have put some end dates on in this, which I think is great. It's always good to say, you know, have a goal. But I'm wondering if along the way, you can keep the board updated on your progress on these items so that, you know, if there's any kind of issue down the road or any happy news down the road.
Absolutely.
That we are informed and then we can also support.
Yep. So we plan to do that on a regular basis. Also, in, in the May meeting, we will come back to the board and rather than have a school improvement highlight at that time, the teaching and learning team is going to come back, and we're going to do the bookend piece where we share with you our progress over this year. So.
Anyone else have questions?
I have a couple of questions. One is, when we look at slide thirty-eight, and I clicked on the link at the bottom, which opens up to the whole curriculum review cycle, I see world language in there for this school year, but it wasn't mentioned in your work for this year. Is that because it's already done, or is that something that?
It's not, it's not done. So Rana, Rania Hamood is working with world language, and we are just getting started. So this actually probably will end up being a multi-year. There's a little caveat on there that says, "Subject to change as necessary." World language is new content underneath me, and the form that you, you see it was our plan. You'll notice that it, once we get into it, sometimes it's not exactly, the curriculum's not exactly where we thought it was. And so as Rania's digging in, we're noticing we need to do some work first before we move straight into curriculum work. And so we are working with teachers. She is meeting with them. We're doing that through more of a PLC format this year, and this will have to be edited because we're not quite ready to be there quite yet.
Okay. And a follow-up question to that, and I think we talked a little bit about this in SPA, with regard to students taking world language in middle school that counts as like a high school elective. Great. So it's the same curriculum that high school students?
It is.
Same resources?
It is. No, there are some, there are some things that are different. Again, I'm, I'm figuring all that out a little bit still, so give me some time.
Sure.
The, the content is meant to be the same, yes. And the, the teachers, we are wanting the teachers at the middle school and the high school to meet together and have conversations with each other, which might not have been something that was consistently done in the past, but that, we're finding that that might be an important step.
Okay. Because my, my worry is that students that are taking the first level in eighth grade, then go on to the second level in ninth grade in high school, may have some discrepancies if they're using different curriculum materials or resource materials.
So we haven't found that, that students are at any kind of disadvantage. That's not something that, that has been reported to us there that we have found, but we do want to make sure that our programming is as consistent as possible.
Okay.
I would say that the curriculum's largely aligned, but there's a very vast difference in the teaching process that happens.
And the resources available to students.
Absolutely.
There, there are some differences between those courses, which we wouldn't want, just like our Algebra I, we want it to be consistent.
I know you get it. I just wanted to ask a question.
I do. But thank you.
A question about the MTSS slide thirty-five. And I know we talk about MYKIP, and for those of you that don't know the acronym, it's the, the Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Plans, the new thing that Michigan is doing for district improvement planning. Based on the whole child that you've talked about, where does culture and climate fit? So how do you do an audit of the building, culture, and climate when you talk about this MTSS framework with the new pyramid?
So culture and climate is inherent in all aspects of this. So when we look at academics, for example, we need to look at all the materials and our teaching practices. So as we think about culture and climate and, you know, back to what Dr. Brady talked about, about implicit bias, or not, I'm sorry, Dr. Lilly talked about implicit bias and stuff. We're working collaboratively to ensure that all of our materials, and as she talked about, the equity audit, making sure that all, all diversity is shown in our materials, but also being very clear and explicit about the fact that we don't have implicit bias or stereotypes. And so it plays in there. As we look at behavior, we look at socioeconomic behavior, you know, like how people from different groups often interact with each other, and helping our staff understand that, helping students understand how to interact together well, as well. And it, it plays across all of these different areas in different ways. And as we kind of share this MTSS framework a little more deeply with you, we'll kind of talk a little bit more about how it intersperses and is kind of interwoven throughout this whole framework.
So it's, we, again, talked about it a little bit in SPA, with regard to having a building that is very culturally responsive and, and has a culture that welcomes and embraces every student, where students feel welcomed and safe.
Absolutely.
That's your foundation for doing all the great curriculum work that Dr. Deiter Brady is doing. So I want to make sure that the foundation is solid and it's laid in every building, and then we grow from there.
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to make sure that we keep that focus on culture and climate, because not all of our kids come into our buildings feeling the way we want them to because of some of the things that happen. And so I appreciate Dr. Deiter, or Dr. Denise Lilly being here for doing that great work because we want to make sure that every child that walks into our doors is welcomed, is appreciated, is lifted, and to go back to last year's, elevated, right? And so I just want to make sure we didn't miss that.
It's also one of the reasons Dr. Lilly has a foot in both of our worlds, so that we always, as we're sitting as a teaching and learning team, we keep that in the center of our focus as well.
I appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Thank you for a great presentation. That's wonderful.
As we bring closure, I do want to add just a little bit. First, I just want to thank this amazing team of educators that I have the pleasure of working alongside this think tank. And I really feel when I, I get so excited about the journey that we've been on, as you mentioned Elevate, if you think back four years, we had to remind ourselves internally as well as externally, YPCCS, because we are incredible and we have, I'm always, I'm always going to say the best options for students here in our community. Then we moved up to just a recognition of our, our district's mission and vision and really thinking about that word excellence, and what does it take to work together to make sure that we're focused and, and, and we have that ability to propel each and every student to excellence. Then we moved into really a call to action, and that's the Elevate. What are we going to do about it? And it was very important for us to continue to streamline. And I will say, I have to admit, as we've been, we've been working with a consultant just on our own, coaching our own leadership up, and we have what, we talk about these archetypes, and we have a lot of sages, we're warriors, we want things now, but we, one of our shadow sides is what's called our orphan voice and our destroyer. So we talk about the importance of streamlining, but we just don't know how to really get things off the plate because everything's so important. Mr. Hurd coming onto the team, he has a good destroyer voice, so we depend on him to help us say, "Is it worth it? Is it working? And if not, let's get, get rid of it." And we're all trying to grow that. So really, that call to action. And now, as you heard, interwoven through all of these areas is this notion of legacy. We really are on the cusp of doing something big. We have done the work to streamline, so you could walk out of this room and you can say, "What are the, the strategic priorities? We're going to be a culturally responsive learning community. We will have an MTSS framework that will have all of the supports that are needed as we look at the holistic child and giving each and every child what they need, and we will deliver a high-quality pre-K through twelve curriculum." Because curriculum and instruction is really what will guide that work. And so I'm so proud of the work of the whole team when we look at the other areas that really support and align that vision to take us to the next level. It is exciting. As I said, can't believe that we're coming to the end of this five-year plan from when we started. So next year will be big work to say, "If we are going to leave this legacy, and what is the measure of our success?" People will begin to knock on our door and say, "Tell me how you did it." And every one of our students will have that experience. When we talk about the aggregate, and we can brag that we're doing great things, but we are failing many of our students here in this district, and we know that that's not okay. And so our legacy will be when everyone has that same experience, and people are banging on our door to say, "Let me know how you did it, and, and let me be a part of that." So with that being said, we will be looking for the collaboration with our board members, with our community members, with our educators, as we continue this work of planning for the next five years to come. And I'm just proud to be a part of the journey. So thank everybody, thank this team for, for leading this work today, and we look forward to, I think the question that came up about progress, we will be very intentional with the presentations that you see each week to make sure that everything is tied into the plan, and we can all really articulate the work that's, that's, that is on the horizon. So thank you for your attention this evening, and how about, we got this done in one night. That's really good.
We're not done.
So we have item number two. Teaching and learning, Ms. Rail?
Yep. So as discussed when we talked earlier about the SPA meeting, we have a resolution, a request to approve a new EL, English learner textbook. And what this textbook is, it's an update of the previous textbook that's about ten years old. The real reason it needs to be updated, other than the fact that it's ten years old, is the fact that it is now aligned to Common Core State Standards. But also included with this are reading strategies for teachers to help support our students, as well as an online component, which includes a read aloud component for our students who are English learners. So for your consideration, we've, we're looking at this, and so any questions that you have, please let me know. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Member McQueen?
So, you know, we're in week four of the school year. So I'm wondering, is this a book that you are needing right now? I mean, do you, it seems like this is something that you need for now.
The sooner we could get it, the better.
So with that said, my wondering is, would any of the board members here have an objection to making this a first and final, given that it is needed, it was needed at the beginning of the school year?
Yeah, I don't have any objections. I guess the question is, is how, how did we get in this situation? Usually we see this process where these books come up towards the end of the school year, where we're preparing them for next year. Did this just take too long to get through the process? Or how, how did we discover that we've got a ten-year-old material that we're now a month into the school year that we're?
We might ask Ms. May to come up and kind of talk about our process.
So I, I just want to make sure that.
No, we talked about it in SPA.
I'm on board with this, but I'd like to understand what happened.
So we did start the process early, last, probably like, I'll tell you, like March, where we began to actually have the publishing company, the reps, come out and show us the differences. And then we also did training with the teachers. We just missed the step of bringing it here, just through the transition of things. So we've been going through the process, and we just didn't get it to you all. If that makes sense.
Because we didn't have SPA meetings over the summer. Dr. Bender was gone, so there was no way for this to come to this table.
Got it. So we won't have that problem ever again.
That's right.
Because Beth is going to stay here until she retires.
I'm not planning on going anymore.
Best legacy is that she'll stay in the seat beyond two years.
Exactly. Okay, so I have no problems at all, and I think it's a great idea.
So, yeah, I have a question about, is it something that they can just stop using their previous text and just use this text, or is it different, a big difference from the old text?
No, it's actually going to enhance what they're already using. So this is the same text, it's just the updated version of the text. So moving into this will now allow them to have online access, where they can actually access it from home. It'll also have the read aloud component, so it just enhances what they're already using.
Okay. So it's an updated version?
Yes.
So it's not like it's a whole new?
No, it's not, no.
Member Berninski?
Just to comment that if we ever are in this situation again, which hopefully we won't be, we have approved things that haven't gone through committees before. Sometimes it just takes, takes a little bit longer, there might be a few more questions. But I don't think there's any issue with not having something go through a committee.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
And I appreciate Kimberly May giving us the textbook, the old and the new. Again, it's a much more updated version. Lessons are very similar, more aligned to Common Core, so we had enough, John and I So we had enough, John and I had an opportunity to go through that, so appreciate it. Um, so just giving the teachers access to this new textbook is going to enhance that experience for the teacher and for the student. Not totally different lesson and totally different textbook, so.
How soon? Will, if we do this?
If we approve it tonight, how quickly can you get it to the teachers and students?
So the publishing company is waiting for us to send over the PO. I've been working with them and just keeping them on hold and saying like, hey, we're working on it, we're working on it. So first thing tomorrow morning, we'll be sitting, sending it in.
So is that?
So like a week?
Is that a week, a month?
No, it won't be a month. No, so we're, I'm, I don't, I don't want to say a week because I don't know positively, but the publishing company is ready to go. So we're looking at a quick turnaround time. I just don't know the exact turnaround time.
Can we make a motion?
Yes.
Well, we need to, action item, right? So Nicole, that'll be two, two zero zero nine fourteen, right?
And this will be a first and final. So would someone like to make a motion for item, action item twenty dash zero nine dash one four?
I will. Okay, so I would like to make a motion, um, action item twenty dash zero nine dash fourteen. Uh, first and final reading to approve the, uh, purchase of the new EL textbook.
Support, I, I support.
Thank you. Uh, the motion was made by Member McQueen, seconded by Member Berninski. Any discussion beyond what we've already had? Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries six zero. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to, um, action items and discussion. So a couple of things here, I just wanted to follow up with my board colleagues about the self-assessment. An email was sent out, um, I want to say about eight, nine days ago, or maybe a week ago. Uh, saying that you have about 10 days to complete the self-assessment. It takes about 25 minutes, you have the link, please, if you haven't done so, complete that by Thursday. It's important that we get each and everyone's data to improve our work.
I will do it tomorrow, I'm sorry.
That's okay, this is why we have a reminder. No, so this is all anonymous, I don't know who's, who, so.
I haven't done mine, so.
I haven't done mine either, so.
That's okay, that's why we have a reminder, that's why we gave some buffer time. So if you could please complete that by Thursday.
Sure.
And then results will come to Superintendent Merritt and myself.
You might want to send out a note to Leonardo as well to stream my hearing.
Yes, good. And, um.
Not the single amount, he's probably done his, so.
Yeah. And another item I have, uh, for a discussion is, I wanted to get an update from Member McQueen, or Vice President McQueen. About the steering committee work that was, um, that took place earlier this week. Could you give us an update?
Um, so the steering committee met a week ago yesterday. And we, it's close to having a report for the board.
Steering committee for what?
Uh, facilities and utilization. So, um, the theme going along with the, um, district is equity. So, um, to have, bring our schools up so that all of our students have, um, an equitable chance to be in a school. So that we'd all have the same resources, um, is, is the big thing. Um, so you'll know that like last night we were at Erickson, you know, they have, they eat in their gym. They don't have caf- they have a cafeteria in the gym. It was lovely, it was very lovely, with the new painting, it was. But it's still, you cannot use then the gym during the lunch period. So, um, I believe that is at the end of October. Um, the report will come to the board, the full presentation. So, it's been a lot of work.
Member Berninski, did you have a question?
Is, is that, um, just the facilities utilization portion, not the boundary work?
So the boundary work, you're going to bring the subcommittee back, Ms. Tiskett, just want to update on that.
That's correct. We, uh, we were working with Plant, Moran, Cressa, and McCarthy Smith and TMP to look at, um, the facility piece. As that's going to, the enrollment projections are going to drive the, where the boundaries are going next. So the, the, the enrollment projections are, are solid. Uh, we're going to come in now and look at what they're projecting in each one of the schools and then adjust some boundaries. Uh, or make some recommendations to adjust some boundaries.
So the, uh, boundary subcommittee, sub-subcommittee will come back together and hopefully have a full recommendation when we come before the full board in October. Second meeting in October.
That's coming in October also?
Yes, because this is already the end of September.
I, I understood that, I miss one meeting and then it's all different, so.
Okay. Um, and I have another update or more of a question for my colleagues. Last time we met, we talked about October 12th and 19th. We went back and forth and said 19th was the first preference. And I neglected to look at my own travel calendar. So I can make it work if we have to, uh, but I'm wondering if we can double check everyone's calendar for October 12th again. As, this is going to be our work session with Michigan School Board, or MS, MASP, Michigan Association of School Boards. Where they're going to go through a work session with us on building community relationships and that communication piece that we've all talked about.
That day's not, not very good for me.
No, okay, so we will stick with the 19th.
So I'm sorry, what was the date?
19th.
October 19th, Saturday.
Yeah, I still have the 19th on my schedule if I needed to do, uh, the 12th works for me, but if it doesn't work for Kate, then we should.
We'll keep the 19th. Okay?
Sorry.
That's okay. We'll go on different, different pathways to get to that family trip. Alright, um, I think that is it for the discussions and now we're moving up to the questions. Follow-up board questions, we have a long list, so let's go through those really quickly. Breakdown of future technology projects.
Still in process, yep.
Data on EL Summer Jumpstart Program.
I believe you got that in notes, but there was a follow-up question, uh, by Trustee Kehoe. And we got the answer to that question and I just emailed it out to everyone today, so.
Thank you for that.
It didn't make any sense.
Thanks for catching it. And a number of students eligible for taking ASCD programs, um, we got that as well.
Yes.
Transportation summer, or transportation summary for summer academy, we got that. And list of summer school courses that were offered, we got the A, B, and C pieces. Uh, the part above A was the list of summer school courses that were offered. So I was looking for the listing of the courses that were offered for summer school, total.
So we got the ones that they didn't offer, but we did the full list.
I just.
The booklet.
Right, the booklet. So which courses were offered overall? That we did not get. What we did get was the courses that did not run due to enrollment.
Okay.
So I would still like to get that full list.
We also got, on that same subject, we got the information about how we support the students that need that course.
Right.
And how we plan that from an economics perspective while providing the most flexibility. So it was a great answer.
Right.
I, I appreciate the way we, we drive that flexibility in the process. That if we can have a, a teacher that we can support with maybe smaller enrollment in one, but greater enrollment in the other, to still make it so that we, we break even in that. So that's, that's a great, great process, so.
Right. Student growth data from Julie and Anthony when that becomes available, so waiting on that one. Uh, what other programs offering that are becoming competition for our programs?
Uh, is that summer school? Or was that?
Uh, that was summer, I think it was, um, both.
That was from Anthony Nella, it was, I think, I'm pretty sure it was from him about what, um, are other programs that are not our summer school program? What are they offering that creates competition for our program?
Right, yeah, so there was a conversation on, we saw concerns about our summer school program having not the full level of enrollment. And so there was a question as to whether we had, what was the, the competition level that we had on, on that? Was it because we didn't offer the same classes? Was it because of, um, you know, whatever the situation was?
And I think we got a vague answer about like.
The flexibility of, of, because our classes are specific times.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so I think we.
It doesn't work for everybody.
We got an answer? Um, I'm okay personally with the, with the answer, I don't know what anybody else was.
Take it off the list then. Uh, explanation of how the master plan aligns to the educational objectives as far as equity and closing the achievement gap goes?
Well, the equity, um, meaning the master plan stuff will come together. Those will remain outstanding.
What is the 10-year facilities plan prioritized, we're getting that?
Yep.
Comparison of our academic programs compared with other districts as well as to understand the disparity between our facilities and other districts.
So we, it was athletics and activities. And what we had before was some great information with respect to, um, to athletics. But no information whatsoever on activities. And we really got a non-answer on activities and I'm not happy with that answer.
It's, it was a, um, it's, it's very difficult. So as we try to go back to our APAAs to determine that information. We could give further information on band, for example, but there's so much fluidity within the, um, you know, my chess club. You might have five kids show up this week, 20 kids show up. So we don't have, they're not able to keep the same information, um, is what we tried to explain. As, um, we are with the, the rosters that come forward with the athletic department.
We have a number of activities and if, if we're, I mean, we, we tout the fact that we have, you know, 100-plus activity programs. And if we have no mechanism to be able to support those things, it seems like they're almost an afterthought.
So, so we did, I saw the question as, I think we were connecting that with facilities and what.
Well, I think it was, the, the point was, is if we're looking at our band program, if we're looking at our Science Olympiad. If we're looking at our robotics program, if we're looking at our STEM programs that we have at the other schools. Um, the, the activities that we do that go beyond what we do, they're competitive differentiators for us in our district, or we believe that they are. But how do they compare against the programs that exist in the other districts? Our, our athletics team did fantastic research in saying where our facilities are at par, better, or below par for the, uh, the other schools. But they did zero work on activities.
So I think that the purpose of that, the response was really to say, we can get that information for some of the larger, and like where, what does your band do? But to say, um, from a perspective of a facility's lens, like where is your, um, language, uh, program meeting after school?
So I don't think that, that's necessarily as big a concern because they don't have the same facility requirements. But robotics has a facilities requirement. Our, our drama and, uh, and, and, and stage work has a facility requirement.
So if that, if we want to narrow the question, we can get you more information. I think that's what we're trying to say in that note.
So I guess the question I would have to them is, what are the specialized, i- if these guys are the ones that are responsible for activities. What are the specialized facilities that we have to have that support activities in our district? And what are surrounding districts and surrounding, uh, competitive places doing to do that? The fact that they need guidance from us about what that needs to be means that they're not paying attention to activities in the same way that they pay attention to athletics.
So I, I wouldn't agree with that summary. Um, so if I, so I wouldn't say it's not paying attention to what you need. So when you think about clubs and organizations, Nick helped me, how many clubs do we have? 100 and some?
Yeah.
The majority of clubs are, our activities are hosting in classrooms. And that's across the district, so they don't have, so it's not, not paying attention. But when you look to say, if you, if you go to Northville and say, Northville, where are you doing your chess club? It's going to be in a classroom if you say. So when we talk about the facilities that are needed, not that, so that question didn't come to us to say, just give the big items that actually have a facility that's needed to host that. And that's what we're trying to address in the question. So if you want us to go and say, yes, for band, for robotics, for the places.
Every activity that we do that either has or should have a specialized facility to support them. Detail them and compare them against what we're doing in surrounding.
So that is a clearer question than what was asked for us the last few times. We didn't have that understanding. And I definitely don't want to say it's not our APAAs not doing the work because they've been very responsive to the questions that we gave them based on our interpretation. Because we didn't have, our understanding coming away from here was just the, what, what we offer in comparison to the districts for activities.
It's about facilities. So if the question, from my perspective, it's about facilities, then they should be calling out the things like our auditoriums. The things like our, um, our band, uh, practice things, the things that we do with our choir and, and any of those things. Those are all things that require specialized facilities to be able to support. And if you're looking at facilities, they should have been top of mind.
And so I would, um, uh, with all due respect, that's the answer that we were providing, not to say that this is the only answer that you're getting. But saying that these are things that we can get information on, other than that, we couldn't get. So I have clarity and we can go to work on getting that information.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Can I just add to that, maybe? Not just facilities, but equipment?
Yes.
Can you be more specific?
So like if the choir needs risers, do we have risers that are not 20 years old?
So only on a, um, equipment for need for these specific areas that you're talking about?
It, it, the point is, is from my perspective, it's about the facilities and the equipment that's necessary to facilitate them.
Yes.
You know, any of the capital equipment that's required. So if it's for, for band, it's about the instruments. It's for, if it's for the Science Olympiad, if they need to have special, um, uh, things that they need to do. If, if it is the zombie club and they just meet in the classroom and they don't need special zombie equipment, then we don't need to know about that.
So, yeah, along those lines, you may, I mean, you have to even think of like Quiz Bowl, they have buzzers that they use. Um, so, and they may have question packets that they have to buy.
How are we supporting those, 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 those activities?
And so I would say, it's getting a little further.
She has a, Nicole has a question.
I feel like, are we still comparing this to other districts? Or is it just?
Yeah, because the, the, exactly, because the point was, we, there, there was a belief that our athletics facilities were not.
Lacking.
Were lacking in comparison to other districts. And as part of our facilities and utilization study, we wanted to make sure that we brought our athletics programs up to be par. Or at least to be, uh, to be, to be world-class. And I think that we've not paid the same attention to the activities that we do.
I, I just want to be careful with that and I know that that feels to be the belief of some, uh, members on the board that you have expressed. But I think that we've been so intentional in saying that it's not just about athletics for us. Where you see our young friend Dalton come every single meet, that is an activity with the performing arts and there's such urgency around that. That's on the facilities.
But he comes saying, oh, this is the thing that's a massive gap for us.
And that's exactly why that's on the plan.
Right.
It's in the plan.
Yes, and so, and, and if you think about even the restructuring of the, um, ADs. We moved from an athletic director to an assistant principal over athletic and athletics and activities. And there is 100% commitment to all activities and athletics because we do see them as an intervention. And so I feel that it, sometimes they get baited against each other, that there's this belief that we are only advocating for athletics. And that is by far not the case. And so in terms of, um, I don't know how we can continue to, to message that, that we want to make sure that all of our programs.
Hear what you're saying.
Have what they need. I have more clarity because I didn't have clarity on your question because the question came out is, you're not doing enough for activities. Tell us what everybody else is doing for activities as it relates to facilities. They went to work with that and most of their information was coming back, we use classrooms, we use classroom. These are the areas that we have our facilities in. So we have clarity now in terms of that comparison. I'm also hearing that we want to know about the equipment for some of those specialized programs.
Say, the major.
Yeah, the major.
Which is good, clarity. So major and looking at 88 different activities and clubs that we offer, it's two different directions. But just, I just really just want to emphasize that because I hear it so many times and I know it's not the intention of the board. But our community comes back and says, we don't have a board that supports, um, our athletics program. We don't have good facilities because our board is not focused on athletics. And I tell them, that's not the case, they're focused on all.
Everything.
So when I, when I look at the capital expenditures that we've made in the time that I've been on the board. We have had at least a 20 to one, um, investment in athletics as compared to activities. At least 20 to one, in terms of the amount of money that we've spent for capital improvements. And to me, that is a disparity with respect to equity in what we're doing. And it speaks to the focus that we have on athletics, sometimes to the expense of activities. And I'd love to see us do the same attention to the activities that we do and to the programs that we do, that, that we do to the athletic programs.
And so I hope that what you will do is track very closely as we go through this 10-year facilities and utilization plan. And see the intention when we talk about a lens of equity that we're trying to put on every single one of our activities as well as athletics. That our kids, um, have access and opportunity to participate in because it's that important to everything that we do.
Great, I look forward to that.
Member Brooks?
Well, um, I was just kind of thinking about, um, a question that would be asked by either a parent or a student about somebody in another district saying, oh, I like that activity you have over there, but why don't we have it over here? It's because we don't have the venue or we don't have the equipment for it. And if we want to be, um, competitive with the other districts and, and invite people to come to our district. And those people are looking for those same kind of activities, we need to have facilities and equipment to deal with that.
Always, and what I would say is, what I love about our district is that's not, we're not the district of no. So when we say, what don't we have, what we have is a response to say, you want a zombie apocalypse club? Then we're going to make one for you. And I don't think that too many people have that club. And so it's, we are very flexible and adaptive to try to make sure that we can give all activities that support our students. Now, across the board, our facilities need work. And that's where we are really capitalizing on something big for our district that we finally can invest in. So when we think about our robotics program and the fact that they're working out of this little teeny tiny classroom that's not 900 square feet. And so, it, it, you know, the opportunities to give them the facilities that they need. When we think about, um, for us, oftentimes the activities comes down to staffing. So we think about Science Olympiad, not that we don't want to be able to offer it K-12. But sometimes we are dealing with not having the staff to do it, so we have parent volunteers. How do we address that? We took it through the Schedule B process to say, let's make sure that we give. We took it through the Schedule B process to say, let's make sure that we give our teachers stipends to do all of this work so that we have elementary exposure, middle school exposure. So, for us, it is never a situation where we're saying, no, we can't do. It's always, how can we make sure that we provide these activities for our students that are of interest? And now, what a great opportunity we have to say, let's get our facilities that can really continue to support what our kids need across the board.
And I think bringing communities together as well.
John's had a question.
All right, Nick, what do they do at that club, the zombie club?
Like, where are they located?
No, what, what do they talk about? I'm just kinda.
They explore the amazing world of the zombie apocalypse.
That's all they do?
Yeah, it's, it's for students who are, we have a number of students who are passionate about that topic and they, they, they really express themselves through this world. And so, yeah, they get together. It's a community, it's like all of our activities, it's a community. It's wait for students to, I'm sorry?
Harry Potter Club?
Yeah, yeah, that's part of it too.
Whatever kids express, if they can find a sponsor, we say, let's, let's let it happen.
For sure.
That's the beauty part of having a campus of 6,000 kids. There's gonna be five or six other kids.
You find your people.
That want to do what you want to do.
Sounds like a lot of fun.
That's the beauty part of it.
And board members, at any point, we can attend some of these clubs and see what they do. Any more questions before we go into follow-up questions from today?
Did we get through the last of them?
I was just gonna say, can we then clarify, what is this like if you kind of?
Right.
Open that, like, what is the action?
Because we're gonna have to build a survey to gather this information from the other districts, which we've done a number of to this point about athletics and other things. So, we, we really do need to know what the ask is for other districts.
Can you read what you have?
I have, what activities require specialized facilities, equipment for need versus other districts.
If we, if we could have a list of, of the, the five or so programs that you really want information on, that would help a lot.
Actually, what I'd love to have our activities people do is tell us what, have them give us a list of what are the activities that we have in our district that require specialized facilities and programs, because I think they should know that.
For our district, oh, of course, but what they asked was for other districts.
And then, the question that, well, we wanna compare those programs against the other districts and whether they even offer those programs. It becomes a competitive differentiator. If, because we, when we're looking at facilities, if we see that another district doesn't have the same auditoriums that we do, then this is a differentiator for us. It's why people should move to our district to be part of those programs. Conversely, if their performing arts center is significantly better than ours, then that needs to be an emphasis.
So, correct, we need an instrument to gather that from other districts. We need to find out what their performing arts center is when it was built.
Right, so I think that, I think that the first thing is to start with the programs that we have and benchmark those against the other district. And then, the second thing is, as subject matter experts in this space, the people that are running our activities programs, what are their peers talking about? You know, we get together and we know whether somebody's running lacrosse or some other programs because we see that. Our athletic teams are engaged in that and we hear those opportunities to perform those, those actions. But if there's an athletics program or if there's an activities program that's happening, we need to get the information about what those things are. I don't know whether it's show choir or we have work that we do on color guard or whatever it is, find out what are the competitive programs that are happening that we're not participating in, whether that's because of enrollment or because of facilities. If it's because of facilities, then it needs to come for, forward to us as part of our, our, our plan that says, we can't offer this kind of activity because we don't have the facilities or the equipment to be able to support that.
So, I do feel like the question is now getting more broad than what we just narrowed it down to. And so, what I thought I heard you say is, let's, we're looking through a lens, the question was originally about facilities, so looking through a lens of activities that would require a specialized facility. So, if I would list those off right now, I would think about our band, I would think about.
Robotics.
Our robotics, I would think about.
Theater.
Theater, even within the.
Theater and choir.
Yep, makers, the, the.
In the science olympiads.
Science olympiad.
If we could, you know, focus on those, we can get that information from other districts.
What else are there?
And I think what Member Berninski said, even like things like Quiz Bowl where you have some equipment that's required, so we're not leaving it up to volunteers to purchase some of that equipment.
So, our AD for athletics and activities should know, for the, the activity programs that are there, what's, what requires specialized facilities or equipment?
They will for us. The, the question is, how do we get that from other districts?
So, do that and benchmark that against the other districts.
Right, but at some point, we're gonna need that information from the districts and we need an instrument to get that from them.
So, we'll take, I'm not so worried about that. I just, the ask, because the ask, if we can just start, so I'm gonna suggest that we deliver on what I believe is the interpretation. We give that to you and if we need more, then we'll take a second step. Does that sound fair?
Yeah, and Member Berninski?
I had a suggestion, but I don't know if it'll help. I mean, I think your idea for going forth is good. I was just gonna say, I think if we could just get a list of activities that have facility and equipment requirements, the major ones. And then, for the ones that we know for sure that there's equipment that other districts would have, like, we know that Livonia has a performing arts center. We know that there are, yes, I know, I've been in it. And we know that other districts have robotics teams. So, for those major ones, maybe if we can get information.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
And Member Lazarwitz?
Since we're talking about the theater and all that, I don't see why it would take so long. We're talking about the new buildings if we do this. Why don't we invest some money and put new stuff, what we have, so that students can use it while we're talking about doing all these new improvements? Because we're really shortchanging the students, in my opinion, by not investing in new technology for the lights, painting some walls in the theater, updating some stuff that needs to be updated, and we're just overlooking it.
So, so to answer that, that's really where the conversation came. Do we wanna piecemeal or do we wanna gut and, and, and give them exactly what they need? So, when you look at the facilities and utilization, we, we gave you that first glance, that's really what's in there is to, how do we make a state-of-the-art center?
I understand, I understand that. That I understand. But like right now, I mean, we can't even paint a wall in the theater where the kids do the plays for Christmas. There's, there's paint peeling in the auditorium in certain spots. I mean, we have to at least invest in the students a little bit. I'm not asking for a whole new theater. I'm just saying, like, let's do something.
Yes.
Because we're not doing nothing.
And, and so, I know, I don't want, I won't, I, I don't want you to focus on, we're not doing anything.
No, I'm just.
So, when we say, just in terms of our protocols and processes, that's when we talk about work orders, so we're not gonna say, hey, we're not gonna fix anything if it's a safety issue, even putting paint on situations that happens over the summer. We have 26 buildings that we work to keep that up. And so, those are things that we, that will take place if there's a lighting issue. We're not gonna say you have to wait until two years when construction begins. And so, that's a part of just the maintenance of a district. We have an opportunity right now with this project to really give our performing arts facilities what it needs to really compete with others in our area. And so, that's what you're seeing as a part of the plan.
Right, but.
So, John, what I would advocate is, let's, since it is so close before we're gonna get that plan, let's wait until October when we get the plan. So, we'll have this information about where we're at from a competitive situation that'll help inform us when we're reviewing the plan. And if the plan comes back and says, this is something that we couldn't do for five years or for 10 years as part of the process, then we, then we take the decision as a board, do we want to accelerate an improvement in the existing process? On the other hand, if we come back with a plan that says, we're gonna be able to do this next summer, then maybe it's better to make the, the big improvements then.
I understand that, but just keep in mind, it's been a while since that theater's been updated, just for something.
Oh, yeah.
And it, and it, and it shouldn't be like that.
I agree.
We all agree. And I think work, we are working toward those improvements.
I see it.
Yeah.
But I'm just trying to advocate for it.
Absolutely.
And, and, and we wanna advocate across the board.
Since we opened that door, I wanna at least.
We have classrooms that have 50-year-old furniture.
Absolutely.
So, it's across the board. We, we have great needs for our kids. They deserve it in every aspect.
A little bit, like every month would be, or every year, something. Is it feels like we're not giving nothing, in my opinion. That's me.
Okay, are we done with the follow-up questions?
Yes, are you guys, have you given us all the follow-up questions that we?
Yes, for.
I didn't know if there were others.
Nope, that's it for last time, but I wanna make sure we get some follow-up questions from this time. What I heard was, we wanted in board notes, October 28, 29 implicit bias training information?
I have it written down, yeah.
Great. And then, oh, I, now I can't read my own handwriting. What pieces of the dynamic plan are not moving forward? And I heard this from Member Kehoe.
Yeah, it, it's, the dynamic plan's really comprehensive. And there's, there's a lot of activities on the dynamic plan overall that are forward-looking. And some of those, because we didn't go through every single thing, line item by line item, let us know which things are in process, which things maybe are complete. I don't think anything's really complete because it's really continuous work. Which things are in the future? Because I think that, you know, if I look at that, there's two things that jumped to my mind. We have the BYOD program. We didn't talk about that, but I think it's in process. On the other hand, we have work that we're doing for accelerated learning and exploring IP at the middle school and the high school level, and I don't think that's even started. So, I don't know if that's, you know, on the plan for this year or whether that's in the subsequent year. So, for every single line item, which things are in process, which things are, you know, future, you know, just so we know where we're at with those things.
And you're only looking for the teaching and learning component of it?
I think that that's the only one that's really got really specifics.
Yes.
I think the other ones were largely pretty well addressed in terms of what was happening. So, I, I did, the, teaching and learning is where I really saw, you know, we talked about the three big rocks that we're doing. We didn't talk about the, the 80 line items that I have on there. So, I think that's the one to me that I think we needed to go into more depth on.
Yes.
I think the other functions, we did a pretty good job of.
Perfect. So, Nicole, did you get that?
I did, I, yes.
Okay, that's all what I noted for tonight?
Yeah.
Okay?
I just got a couple of things. Do you want it on the turnaround for the EL books? Did you want a timeframe of how quick that turnaround's gonna be?
No, I think we approved it. We're just gonna wait for the company to send it whenever, soon as they can.
And then, I put gap analysis timeframe, would that be?
Yeah, I think that Kate spoke about that and I think it was more of a broad thing and that as you go through all the, the, the projects that are happening that we discussed, bring them forward to the board before, you know, the end of the summer. I think Beth, you spoke about, we're gonna get kind of an update on those things in, in May, which will be great, but if you have, for example, the gap analysis done in, in January, it might be great to get an, an update on that, even if it was just in board notes.
Absolutely. And we'll also be planning to come back to the board and do a presentation